All right, sounds good. Welcome, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. Before we start, we've got a swearing in of our newest member, Blaine Vacas. Why don't we go right in front, Blaine?
(laughter)
I, Blaine Vacas, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Blaine Vacas, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
Of the city of Forest Lake, Minnesota, with the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
The city of Forest Lake, Minnesota, with the best of my dignity and judgment. So, all right.
Congratulations.
Well done.
(applause)
Thank you.
Congratulations, buddy.
Thank you.
Can we get a roll call, Bailey?
Councilmember Vacas.
Here.
Councilmember Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Eigner.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here.
I'll ask everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
No motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. That brings us to open forum. Looks like we might have a couple people still signing up.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I just want to comment on, I was watching from my television, the nominating and the carrying on. It's much more comfortable in an easy chair with a beer in one hand and a handkerchief in the other to dry my tears from laughing. But anyway, my question is this: all the people that you guys nominated, I would like to see the combined attendance of how many meetings and candidates ever attended the city council meetings. I got a hunch it's down to almost none, so it looks to me like there's not much interest in this. I would have applied if I hadn't been so old. But I liked the way it went better than that Molly Bonnet thing, where the mayor just gave her the job because she was one of his cohorts. So I hope that this works out a little better. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to keep this Brent short if I can. Okay, here's the first thing: how many of you people were here in 1991? Oh, there's a few old farts in here. Okay, anyway, this shows a bunch of people that were here, all the businesses, hundreds of them are gone, okay? That's 1991, okay? In 2001, this city body, or not you guys, took over the complete township. Township had 32 square miles or 8,000 people, and the city has done nothing for us since 2001. The city here built this building, a bunch of other buildings. We're $35 million in the hole now because previous administrations gave $9 million to the Y along with free land. They built this building with no voter input. Like Ron was saying, nobody shows up these meetings. These people that are living here right now, I don't see any of them live here. These are all with their outside interests, okay? So my big complaint is, my big complaint, so to speak, is that what is, when they tried to rebuild Forest Lake, they tore up downtown. All we've got is one beer drink down at Vernell's. You pull their liquor license, they'd fold up. What has the park place done? What has the plaza done? When they built those two buildings, they brought in the peppermint powder, they folded. They brought in the brick house, that folded. Everything's folding up. Now their yellow bus is leaving from Sam's place down there. So what I'd like the city council to do now is use some discretion and common sense. In other words, don't start jumping around doing, jumping through the things. Like I talked to Donovan, he's been here three years, he's got no clue of what's going on here in the last 27 years. I have. My taxes were 1,200, I bought my house, now they're 3,600. I live on the outskirts of the town, on the Scandia border. The city has done nothing, and same with Ron. They've done nothing for him. In fact, he lives in the city of Forest Lake, and he's got a Scandia mailing address. And I'll tell you one more thing, I'll bring it up quick, like, is the people that have left here. All those businesses up there on Highway 8, in Greenway, they are not in Forest Lake. That church up there on 61, they use Forest Lake as their mailing address, they're in Wyoming. So when you say buy local, do this and that, those car repair shops in Sears and a bunch of them, they were in Forest Lake at one time when they're gone. Also, the Forest Lake Times official paper is printed, is published in Princeton. So why can't they do it here? Hire some people here. So my big word is tonight is that let's have some discretion and don't go making changes until you realize the consequences of who and how it's going to affect downstream, because this city has been run by a 3 to 2 margin by the old administrations for so long that it's a joke. This city is in sad shape. Thank you.
All right. Carolyn Nierhaus.
My name is Caroline Nierhaus, and I'm here tonight to show support for the zoning amendment that would allow the residential treatment facility to be built here in our city. I am a resident of Forest Lake. I was born and raised here, moved away for just a little bit for college and for a few years after, and now I've moved back here with my family. Last week, I was at the school board meeting and fought back tears and held down this sick feeling in my stomach as I had to listen to Dr. Massey read through the cuts that our school board was forced to make to our district funding. Our community had failed our students. One of my first thoughts was, I've got to get my son out of our district. But as soon as I thought that, I was really ashamed and embarrassed that I had thought that. Because I believe in Forest Lake. I believe in this city that I call home. I believe our community can pull itself together and survive this. Why do I bring this up? Because in terms of this opportunity to amend this zoning, I believe that you, our council members, will do the right thing for our community. The city of Forest Lake's website says that our greatest asset is the people. Let's make this work. One of the best books that I've read recently is "Community" by Peter Black, and he says many things that are very relevant to this discussion tonight. To quote him, "The social fabric of community is formed from an expanding shared sense of belonging. It is shaped by the idea that only when we are connected and care for the well-being of the whole that a civil and democratic society is created. The context that restores community is one of possibility, generosity, and gifts rather than one of fear and retribution. A new context acknowledges that we have all the capacity, expertise, and resources than an alternative future requires. I therefore, council members, urge you to envision a community and possibility and an alternative future, one where we seek to say yes to our youth, to tell them they matter, and one where our leaders show with its actions that its residents are its greatest assets." Thank you. (applause)
Dave, was it Wagner, Wager?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council. I've been a resident of Forest Lake for over 20 years. I was in the township before it was annexed. This is going to affect my neighborhood. I like my neighborhood. I'm asking you not to change the zoning. I don't want my neighborhood to change, and I have a feeling by changing the zoning, you are going to open Pandora's box, you're going to be allowed too many changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Smith. If you could come up, if you could state your name and address.
My name is Alex Smith. I live 468 First Avenue Northwest. Tonight, I'm not talking about the zoning, but I'm talking about the potential for our dog park here. I know a dog park has been kind of a sore subject in our community for a couple of years now, and many of us are kind of defeated with the options that have been placed and presented in the past. Currently, I've done my due diligence and looked at a lot of options throughout the city, and I've got kind of a map here. If you'd like, I can show you the number one priority or option, so if you'd like later on, I can give that to you. But really, what the heart and soul of this proposition is, is a volunteer-led dog park. And so what volunteer-led means is essentially volunteers would spend their time maintaining and upkeeping what's necessary in this dog park. Ideally, we'd be modeling this proposal after the Outer Lake Dog Park in the White Bear Lake Township area of Ramsey County. What's nice about that dog park is that it has a volunteer base that's solid and established. Not only that, but they're loyal to their dog park, and having even just entered into the parking lot, you can tell that they take ownership in everything that they do there. What's really nice about that dog park is that it came from humble means. At one time, it was just one fully fenced in area, but now they have nearly 20 acres of fully fenced in area that's well-maintained throughout the year by, again, a very solid volunteer base. We're talking at this level of entry-level dog parks, we're talking fencing, signage, and trash. There is very low upkeep, especially with volunteer manpower, and the location that I propose actually makes a lot of sense compared to all the other locations that have been proposed in the past. Most recently, there's been quite a big consideration in kind of, in conjoining two main parks in the northwest neighborhood, which was a solid option but very complicated due to wetland. The proposal that I propose is actually currently zoned as highway business, but hasn't been touched in years. And due to the wetland around it, the likelihood that it'll be actually developed, in my eyes, is probably a lot less than the potential for development on Broadway and other areas as well. Something to consider, too, is there's a lot of dogs in this area, and we see on the Nextdoor app often that there's dogs running amok and people trying to take care of their dogs and whatnot, but to have a fully dedicated area that we could use and utilize throughout the year would be essential to us dog owners who appreciate not only a companionship of our furry little friends, but also to give them the opportunity to socialize and be better, more rounded, well-rounded dogs.
If I can get you to kind of wrap it up.
Yep.
With a three-minute limit.
Yep. And so, all in all, I did start a poll on the Nextdoor app, and within a week, there was 224 people who had voted. The end results of that poll, as of tonight at 6:00 PM, was 79% in favor of this dog park, this style of dog park, this community-led dog park. So I'm in the entry-level stages of this thing, and I'd like to continue the discussion to see what options are available. But with that, I'm done, and would anyone like to see the proposed location?
I'll give that to Bailey, she can pass it out. I would suggest if you want to contact the city, we get you on the agenda for the Parks, Lakes, and Trails Commission.
Okay.
And kind of for the discussion in that round.
Great, thanks so much.
Ron Moore.
Ben, I think my comments should be in the research and regular agenda.
Okay, I don't think we're having a public hearing on the regular agenda, so.
Well, maybe I should say something.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for listening to me on there, and I know many of you personally in business relationships, and I respect your opinion, even though we disagree sometimes on a lot of things, but I want you to know, it's kind of ironic, Ben, that one of the things that made this little piece of property that I have so attractive was the great work you did to drain Lake Susan on our property. If you might have noticed that during the construction of the airport several years ago, there was some drainage, and Ben and the council resolved that problem, so now Lake Susan is dry. I no longer have lakefront property. Now, maybe that'll reduce my taxes a little bit, you suppose? But I want to say one other thing, the influence, I know your purview is primarily what happens right here in Forest Lake, but the effect of this project is going to have far-reaching consequences far beyond the city of Forest Lake, more than you can ever imagine. You know, while I was listening to all these discussions, and I hope we hear some more specific details this evening, I have not heard really one specific reason why this project should not be approved. On there, it was proposed to the planning commission several weeks ago, they approved it unanimously, and after the last meeting, several concerns were raised, legitimate concerns by the council, it was sent back to the planning commission, the planning commission again approved it unanimously. On there, the city attorney has looked, and if you read the recent article, has looked at all the concerns about how it will affect zoning on other parcels, and feels that it will have almost negligible impact on that thing. There will be hundreds of new jobs, millions of dollars of payroll added to the city of Forest Lake. It might possibly be the second-largest employer in the city. On there, sir. There's lots of reasons why this, and the other reason, like I mentioned a little bit specifically for my space, my purpose was, you know, we've lived here 40 years, this is my home, and I love the city of Forest Lake. And the concern of several of our neighbors was, you know, oh, they're going to develop that property, what's going to be, happen there? Not in my backyard, but after we met with most of the neighbors, and several of you were here tonight, you were pleased to learn that we were going to keep those green spaces. They could look out their back deck from their kitchen window and still see the horses in the pasture back there. On there. So the other thing, too, is that this is, of course, I'm trying to be objective on all these things right now. This is, and I'm, it is a beautiful space, and I think that the house has some historical value. I'd even thought about contacting the Minnesota Historical Society. The house is over 100 years old. We're only the third family to live in it. Abel Poole Rice homesteaded this place over 100 years ago. Another family lived here, and we've lived here for 40-plus years. On there, so this, and I hate to leave it, so, but the barn is in pristine condition. On there, I mean, we've maintained that. On there, we've tried to keep everything to maintain the character of that building. Now, my wife might disagree with me, because if you look at the size of the to-do list on my refrigerator door, it gets longer every year. But the sad fact of the matter, let me talk personally. This weekend, I celebrated my 75th wedding, 75th birthday, not my 75th. It just seems like 75 years I didn't marry. But, no, but my four grandkids came up from, to visit grandpa from Atlanta, because they know that the farm may not be here someday. On there, I'm sorry, but at 75 years old, I am just not capable of doing, maintaining that property anymore. It is a beautiful property. Every time I walk out the door, I see 100 things that need to be done. But, sir, but most importantly, I've given you the objective reasons why I think this project should go through, but let me give you some personal reasons, my subjective reasons. On there, and some of you know what I do. On there, I am a retired engineer. I build water treatment systems all over the world, but now I'm working with a different kind of water. I work with what is known as living water. I support 20 kids in the country of Haiti. I started out years ago sponsoring one kid through Compassion International, and I just can't say no. And these were kids when they were nine, 10, 11, 12 years old. Today, I have 20 kids. They're all in their twenties, all of them are in the university. This is my passion, this is my love, this is what I do. And those of you who are moms and dads know how hard it is to raise a family and take care of your kids when they're living in your home. Imagine how hard it is to be a dad to 20 kids by text message and emails. Most of these kids are orphans, almost all of them are from single mom homes, and so I am dad to these 20 kids. This is my passion, on there, so, and I, all I want to do, my goal has been to sell this property so I can spend more time with my kids. And as I mentioned, you know, those of you, if this does not happen, I really honestly do not know what I'm going to do. And as I mentioned, the impact of this project goes way beyond the borders of Forest Lake. This will be a world-class facility. If you're familiar with the hills.
Hey, Ron.
And the work they've done, you will see that. But your impact may go extend all the way to Haiti. Gentlemen, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. (applause)
Thank you, Mayor and council. Jim Smith, 7940 Scandia Trail in Forest Lake. You always have to be careful who you sign up after. And Ron, I actually did the first part of what I was going to present tonight, so I'm thanking for that, Ron. Just talking about some of the history of what happened here and the concerns two weeks ago, or whenever the last meeting was, when we met here. The concerns were clarification. You guys were looking for clarity, and women were looking for clarity, from the planning commission, and you sent it back to the planning commission to get that clarity. That clarity seemed to come into place when the planning commission reaffirmed their stances, they did some studies, they found there would be negative, negligible impact of the, of the text amendment on the community, on development in the community, and by 5 to 0 vote, they passed it. There was also concern about getting more of the public involved and more public comment, despite the fact there were probably 100 people in the room last time we were here. Hence, we're made that there were some dissenting voices in the community. I've yet to hear those dissenting voices, and I don't deny that they're probably there. If there are voices in the community, and those voices do win the day, we need to understand what those voices are and what the issues are. At this point, I really have no idea what those issues are, and actually very little. And I've heard, had conversations with people tonight, that they've heard very little of the negative to this issue. It seems like it's all positive to me. No matter how the vote goes, and no matter what happens tonight, I'm asking for one thing from the council. If you vote no against this, we need some clarity from you as well on why you voted no. Are the objections to the text amendment because it's damaging our community and have nothing to do with the facility that's going in place? Let's make that clear in the minutes. Let's make that clear for the record. I really want to know why, because I don't see any reason to vote no against this tonight. Or if a no vote means no to the facility. Now, practically, it does, but I'm willing to listen if there's an issue with zoning that is going to be so negatively impacted that that outweighs the positive that this facility will bring to the community. So I encourage you, please, vote yes to this. And as Ron says, not just for our community, it's something that's vitally needed in the state of Minnesota. Thank you very much.
All right.
Susan Young, 9950, 199th Street North. A longtime resident of Forest Lake. I've got two things on my agenda tonight. One, I'd like to know when the compost site is going to open. As a master gardener, I'm getting lots of questions, can I still prune trees? Can I still prune shrubs? Yes, yes, they can for a limited amount of time. We are going to see spring. It's going to get warmer, bud break is going to happen. Pruning should be done now. I'd like to know when you're planning on opening the compost site. I would certainly hope that you'll be open by the middle of April, because there's a longstanding tradition in Forest Lake of being able to give compost and give chips to residents of Forest Lake over the Earth Day weekend. So that's, that's coming up pretty fast, April 22nd. The second thing that I would like to address is, the city has a development contract with a local company that requires the city to pay them $30,000 every year as part of that development contract, provided that the company has a certain specified percentage of their employees who are residents of Forest Lake. I would like to know if the city is continuing to monitor that employment, verifying the addresses that the company gives you, and if they're not meeting that criteria, has the city continued to pay that $30,000 to the company? I realize you can't answer that this evening, but I would hope for an answer within the next week or so, and you all know how to find me. Thank you.
Sue Abderholden, I am not a resident of Forest Lake, but I am a resident of Minnesota. And you have the opportunity tonight to help children and youth in Forest Lake, in Washington County, and in the state of Minnesota who struggle with their serious mental illness. You have the opportunity to help over 300 children who have to leave our state every year.
So tonight, we are talking about a zoning text amendment. I'd like to keep the focus on that, not on the specific facility.
With all due respect, it is totally related to the facility. I have spoken before of many city councils where we've tried to build facilities to serve people with mental illnesses, and city council members have actually taken very courageous votes on text amendments, on changes to ordinances, in order to allow them to build in their, in their cities. And it is totally related to the text amendment. And what I do know is that other city councils have been courageously voting for them despite total neighborhood objection. But tonight, and this was true at the last meeting, too, you had total neighborhood support, almost total. Neighbors showed up without even asking. You did a poll on your Facebook page, and 85% people supported it. Look around to all the people in this room who are wearing these signs, who are supporting this. You have an opportunity to vote yes, an easy vote, because you don't have the huge neighborhood objection that I have seen in my over 16 years, over 30 years, working on disability issues. So it is totally related. I would really urge you to vote yes on this, so that this facility that will help not only the children in your city, but children across the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
I live just down the road in Lionel Lakes. I'm here to talk about the zoning amendment also. My daughter, at 10 years old, was diagnosed with depression and anxiety. At 12 years old, she became suicidal. She was recommended for hospitalization, but because of her age, there wasn't anything available, because those type of facilities are so lacking in this state and in this area. That's why I say I'm 10 minutes away. And the people that would be coming, obviously, it would be children in the residential facility with their parents that love them, coming to see them. And what's interesting is, where I live used to be a horse farm, and my daughter loves horses. And if that could be part of the therapy, that would be amazing, to keep that horse farm and keep that beauty of the neighborhood. Would be a really, really wonderful and powerful thing that you can vote on tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Thomas Harold Burkes. I live in the northwest corner of Maplewood. I am here tonight regarding the vote on the zoning. I am also here tonight as a grandpa. I have three beautiful granddaughters, ages two, four, and seven. They are a very big light in my life. I also live with bipolar. It was late onset, such that neither my wife nor I knew anything about it when we were having children. I'm excited for you. I'm excited for you here tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, for you have the ability to make a very big decision. A decision such that Forest Lake will be known for its willingness to open up an amazing facility for youth and children. One that will reduce the number of Minnesota's children that have to be sent down to Iowa or up to Fargo or elsewhere for the type of care your PRTF will provide. One that will very positively touch sixty children in need of care and their families day after day after day. Will my grandchildren need this care? We don't know yet. But other children and grandchildren will. And you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, have the ability tonight to make this possible. Thank you.
My name is Dave Hartford, and I live in Clear Lake, Minnesota. And I wanted to speak to the text amendment tonight. I just wanted to state that over the last couple of months, one of the things I want to address is there's been a lot of misinformation and continues to be, kind of even at the last council member meeting, we need more information, was kind of one of the big things that I heard from the council. So I wanted to address just a few things that would add some clarity. One of the issues, I think, is that the name psychiatric residential treatment facility is a little bit of a misnomer that people don't understand, that this is actually closer to an inpatient unit. So it's not a residential. I think that term throws people off just a little bit about what's the nature of the facility. But this is actually, according to the federal government, is classified just under, it is an inpatient psychiatric freestanding. So it's a secure facility, so there aren't children leaving the facility unless they're escorted. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is that I think there's good consensus that the state is in crisis around our services for children. I believe there was a letter that was sent by the DHS Commissioner to the council supporting this project, because we are in crisis. And unless people start to respond to crisis, we have children in emergency rooms, we have children, you can hear endless stories from a group, even here, Forest Lake residents, that have all kinds of crises associated with their families. So who will we serve? And again, I've heard different people kind of talking about these topics, is why I'm kind of bringing them to the council to clarify. Seven to seventeen-year-olds, so this is not, we plan to serve that population, not to twenty-one. The children coming to the facility, mood orders, depression, anxiety, children with neurological conditions like autism. These are non-adjudicated youths, so the courts are not sending these children to us. The two criteria to come to a PRTF is services in the community have not worked for them, so they need to have had experiences in the community, and it's not working. And the second one is the treatment inside the facility must be, it's anticipated that will improve their condition. So I think those are very important considerations. The big piece that we do, if you think about what our mission is, is we treat families and their children, with the idea of getting those children improved so they can return home to their parents, and we are very family-focused, and that our care is for both the family and the children. So if you think about it, and just think about what's being said in this room, and I've heard it in this chamber a number of different times now, the heartbreaking stories that people have in not having these services, children going to jail instead of a service like this. And if every community responds in a way that says, "Not here," where are we going to be with this? I would, these are our children, and they need this service. So I would just urge this council to really take a good, hard look at that and follow the, there's lots of support to have this happen as soon as possible. If it was your child in crisis, you would want to do something about it. Thank you.
Jennifer Curtis? Jennifer Curtis?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Welcome, Blaine. Citizens, community members. I don't think it's, I don't think it's any secret what side of this I'm on. I think a lot of you in the room probably know who I am. I have been very vocal in trying to get community uproar about the zoning amendment and the proposed facility, because there has been a lack of such from the council trying to get the community together. So as a community member, I have taken that upon myself to do. So I want to show you a picture. Some of you in O'Blain, you're new, there's probably other people in the room that aren't familiar with the story that I told last time, but this is Taylor. She's my daughter. This is about two months before her first suicide attempt, on the lacrosse team, going to school regularly. This is every one of our children. It could be anyone. The problem with, I'll just go, so the story is, is that Taylor, after many suicide attempts, needed to have residential treatment. Unfortunately, the one that was up in St. Cloud did not work out, because she left the facility regularly, and she needed a secured unit. She wasn't a harm to anybody. She literally just didn't want to be there, so she left. Unfortunately, there were no beds, and she ended up at the Lionel Lakes Juvenile Detention She was there from November of two thousand fifteen through May of sixteen, and went through their quote-unquote program, which literally was packets that they printed or copied out of books. It was definitely by no means a replacement or any sort of therapeutic programming that helped her, and I see that now. But at the point, I had a child who was trying to commit suicide, who was regularly cutting herself. I had a baby and a toddler at home, and there was no way that I could keep her safe. And there was nowhere, even if you look at the website now, if you look at the Minnesota Department of Health and Human Services, if you look for a secured mental health facility for adolescents, there are four in the entire state. And I'm not talking like sixty-bed facilities, units. So you could be talking about ten beds. So we might have under a hundred beds in the entire state of Minnesota that have a secured unit, component. Through all of the community outreach that I've been doing over the last month or so, I have met very few opposition. The ones that I have seem to have a theory about these kids. I don't want these kids near my home. Let me just very clear point out that when you say these kids, this is who you're talking about. These are not the kids that are being seen in the news for school shootings. These are the kids that are only out there to hurt themselves. They're non-adjudicated. They aren't a threat to the community. These are the kids, the kids that are already in our community, but unfortunately aren't getting the help. This is a one in five for children mental, for adolescent mental illness. Let's not beat around the bush. There's already mentally ill children in our neighborhood. It's not going to bring any more threat than what we already have. As a matter of fact, it's probably going to make it better, because they're actually going to be getting the services that they need. I just want to point out too, because I heard her comment earlier, the zoning amendment, and this was previously said, it affects currently two undeveloped parcels. It's not going to affect the whole, I understand that it changes the zoning amendment for the multifamily, but it's two, two undeveloped parcels. And if you look at the map, and I don't know if that will be shown tonight, but the proposed zoning map for the 2040 comp plan, there's no additional multifamily that's been, and I know that that can change. But theoretically, this is not going to change many parcels of land in the upcoming future.
I can get you a rapid.
Yep, yep. And just reiterating, there are forty-eight kids in the city of Forest Lake, in our community that go to our schools, that are receiving special education services from District nine sixteen, which is, you know, heaven forbid that they ever need that level of care, but they're already in our community. And yes, it will help other kids in Minnesota, but we have to remember that this is not only going to affect outside Forest Lake, it's going to greatly affect Forest Lake. Thank you.
Christopher Lyden, sixty-two, seventy-five, Holly Drive North, Lionel Lakes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. The last time I was here, I said something wonderful, meaningful, and noble was going to happen for the city of Forest Lake. I was wrong. It's tonight, so let's get excited. Tonight, the entire city council has the profound opportunity to support our youth through a simple text amendment. First, I want to recognize Mr. Hart and the diligence he put into his staff report. As they say, he left no rock unturned. He may have missed a bird nest perhaps on Two Hundred and Second, but that's it. Seriously, Mr. Hart concludes in his report, and I quote, "All unintended consequences of the proposed zoning text amendment appear to be insignificant." It bears repeating. All unintended consequences of the proposed zoning text amendment appear to be insignificant. I know as city council members, sometimes you can be given information overload. You can get to the point of what I call paralyzation through over-analization. You can use that in your next work session. Leadership at times is more about keeping things simple. Courage is about simply doing what's right regardless of personal consequence. I honest to God think that if you had a city administrator, he or she would tell you that as civic leaders for your community, you don't have the right to choose collaboration. You have the responsibility to be collaborative, period. You have the responsibility to create, support, win-win relationships. But again, leadership is keeping things simple. If your grandma bakes you the most delicious pie, you simply rejoice in it. You're not compelled to put in, to put it under a microscope. You're not compelled to understand and analyze the ingredients or the bake times. I encourage you to keep it simple. Obviously, Cambria Hills is not an apple pie, but it is a golden egg, a golden opportunity for the city of Forest Lake and its children. I'm not saying Cambria Hills is what Mayo is to Rochester, or what Hazelton is to Center City. But for the children it serves, it will be, just as life-changing and life-giving. Keep it simple. It always feels great to do the right thing. Tonight, tonight, something wonderful, meaningful, and noble is happening in the great city of Forest Lake. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, my name is Barbara Herzog. My address is fifty-three seventeen one hundred eighty-second Lane, Wyoming, Minnesota, five-five-zero-nine-two, and it's actually Columbus, it's just a zip code. And our children, we have three boys, attended Forest Lake area schools from pre-K through We lost our youngest son by suicide a year and a half ago. And it's a very devastating thing for us. I'm here because I don't want any other families to go through what we are going through. It hurts. And I see an opportunity to help kids. Sixty-bed facility, these kids are already in our community. After Kobe died, several families came, approached us, and said, "My daughter, my son," three of them were very close to committing suicide themselves, died by suicide rather. And they were able to get help. I'm very happy for them. And suicide is the second-leading cause of death in the U.S. of teens. These kids are already in our backyard. They're everywhere. They don't fit a stereotype. They're kids with good grades, they're athletic, they're kids with poor grades, they're kids with every race, every socioeconomic background. They don't fit a stereotype. There's many, many kids in our community that need help. They're already there, they're already in the backyard, and this is a way to help them. I'm a registered nurse. I worked at Unity Hospital for twenty-four years in pediatrics. I would come on some shifts, and we'd have, I'd be assigned to a patient who had overdosed on pills. The social worker and I would spend our, half of our shift making phone calls, trying to find a bed for this teen. It was a challenge, I'm telling you. They'd be sent off to a rural, if they got a bed at all. There's a dire need in Minnesota for more youth mental health, inpatient facilities. And not just depression, there's kids all over with anxiety and bipolar and addictions and so many other diagnoses that could be helped with this. So I'm asking the council, what better use of this piece of property could there be than building this facility, Cambria Hills? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, John Bodine. Recently moved up to Wyoming, spent the first forty years of my life in Forest Lake. My family's been in Forest Lake since nineteen seventeen, I believe. So I think our legacy is well enough to get some opinions here. We have an opportunity here to do something that's outstanding, I believe. Looking up at the council there, I grew up with Sam's boys, and I'm aware that three of the council members have kids in my kid's age. I've got kids from eighteen months to twenty-six years old. They're in, they're in the bullseye of kids that can fall into trouble. We have an opportunity to create a legacy in Forest Lake. Legacy means beyond our lifetimes. We can affect the lives of not just one child, we can affect the lives of hundreds of children. I'm pretty sure I could ask any one of you, would you do anything for your child if they fell into the despair of mental illness? And I think every one of you, without even blinking, would say you would. A no vote is a lie. Thank you.
Kathy Beistrom, two-on-five-six-five Harrow Avenue North, Forest Lake, and a near-lifelong resident of this community. For the last approximately eighteen years, I have worked tirelessly to improve resources For the last approximately 18 years, I have worked tirelessly to improve resources and strengthen safety nets for young people with mental illness in this community. This is an incredible opportunity for us. We've hashed and rehashed the pros of the proposed zoning text amendment tonight, which I wholeheartedly support, and frankly, if this comes to fruition, will be first in line to volunteer. We've discussed language that allows for flexibility and development, alignment with our comprehensive plan, potential direct and indirect economic impacts, opportunities to counter the stigma that follows mental health and the false pretense that children or adults with mental illnesses are violent. But I want to approach this tonight from a little different perspective, from that of a healthy community. Not necessarily healthy in the context we normally think of, free from disease, physically active, safe, drug-free, and so on, but healthy in the broader sense where all people can meet their economic, social, physical, cultural, and spiritual needs, work together for the common good, and participate in creating a future and building a community that they can be proud of. Skilled community leaders work with others to develop and sustain the health and vibrancy of a community, not in spite of, or in opposition to. In other words, they nurture the social capital of the community, the people, and the relationships. Social capital is much like financial capital. You can draw on your account only if you've deposited something into it. Our ability to work together tomorrow depends a lot on how we treat each other today. Wise investors do not take their financial capital for granted, in the same way wise community leaders do not take their social capital for granted. These relationships are typically grounded in three principles: reciprocity, durability, and most importantly, trust, the belief in and the reliance on honesty, integrity, and reliability of the other partner. So that brings me to my point. Not only are you rich in social capital here tonight, just look around you. You have placed a level of trust in the thoughtful, insightful, and articulate members of your planning commission to review and comment on this proposal. Twice, this citizen-led commission, citizens who I believe truly have the best interests of this community at heart, have given you a green light recommendation to move ahead with the zoning text amendment. If we truly and genuinely want they and other citizens engaged in the future of this community, we must listen to their recommendation. We cannot discount their opinion or minimize their voice on this matter.
I can get you to wrap it up.
We, not you, I, us, or them, need to make our community healthy again, and it can start with you here tonight. Thank you.
Brandon Elligert.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Elligert. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. We're here to represent the applicant. We're the site development consultant and engineer of record for the project, and we just wanted to take a quick opportunity to kind of re-step how we got to where we are tonight. So we worked with the applicant and met with city staff in 2017 to submit the zoning text amendment. The zoning text amendment was recommended for approval by not only city staff, but also the city attorney to help clean up consistencies in the existing zoning ordinance. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, which was brought forth to this body. You had some additional questions and sent the project back to Planning Commission, which again was unanimously recommended for approval. We look forward to working with you through the conditional use permit and are excited to partner with the city of Forest Lake. Thank you.
Mark McLean.
Thank you for the time. Good evening, council members, Mayor Winnick. Mark McLean from Kraus Anderson Development Team, also representing the applicant. I just want to take a quick moment of time to kind of speak a little bit to the economic impact of what approving or amending this zoning text amendment would do in allowing the CUP to happen to build the campus. We're talking about a facility that will bring over 150 high-paying jobs to the city of Forest Lake, estimated payroll nearing $9 million, one of the largest employers in Forest Lake by record. The elders' development impact analysis the city ordered, which we may or may not hear as the agenda items move on, will tell us that a supervised living facility such as the new Cambia Hills campus that we are proposing, when compared to apartments, industrial, office, retail, any other real development classification, brings about double the amount of employment and over double the amount of wages and benefits to create employment economic impact directly of nearly $9 million, for the example they used in that generic impact study, but ours payroll will be more substantial than that. 60 cents of each of those dollars staying in the community with a total of about $5.4 million by calculation, direct hard economic impact staying in the community of Forest Lake. Each one of those dollars turns over about six times in the community. I can also offer a little bit of perspective when it comes to the discussion regarding the comp plan and the narrative that's out there that Highway 61 is going to be the next great commercial development corridor, opening up potentially a freeway interchange at I, or I'm sorry, at 180th. Coming from Kraus Anderson, we are a commercial property owner not more than 400 yards away. We have commercial construction-ready pads for sale, and the legacy on that commercial property is a vacant bank. That's what we have, a five-year-old Patriot Bank that went dark because there is zero traffic and activity. So when I meet with the other landowners along this corridor that also want to see a commercial node happen, the impetus there is to create something of a catalytic event. Our facility is going to be a $25 million privately funded facility with a $9 million-plus payroll, bring 150 jobs and traffic to that Highway 61 corridor. It could be the one catalytic event that gets commercial development going along that whole section of, that whole node of development there. When we look back at what it takes to get commercial development of that scope...
I can get you to wrap it up soon, please.
...into a community, as evidenced in Forest Lake with the tax increment financing that's going out, with the subsidies given to other developments, we come at it from the sense that even though we are creating far more high-paying jobs, far more, matter of fact, as the ELLER study tells us, double what any other, you know, commercial use or reguidance or whatever would create some sort of, an event to redevelop this maybe decades down the road into the kind of commercial node that would bring this kind of jobs in one false loop that we are. We are asking for no subsidy and no benefit. Again, I'll say that. We are asking for no subsidy and no benefit to bring this to your community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I represent Kraus Anderson. The emphasis has been on the text amendment that we are dealing with tonight and that we've dealt with over the last couple of months. I want to just reiterate, because it's important for us to keep in mind, what is the problem we're trying to solve? What's the issue here? The text amendment here seeks one minor change to the language of the zoning code that actually permits facilities like this in the multifamily zone. Specifically, your zoning code is now written, says that a person can construct a residential facility in the multifamily zone of up to six residents, of six to 10 residents, and from 10 residents beyond to infinity, provided one criteria is met, that it occurs within a single-family house. In other words, a person could today expect to receive a permit for a 20-unit residential, licensed facility in the multifamily zone, provided they put it in something called a single-family house. That model is not one that we use, that anyone uses in modern-day medical provisioning, but it's what the code provides. And so when confronted with that irregularity, and it was observed by staff, and I think it's been observed by the planning commission, the solution was, the question was, what could be done to solve this problem? Where we have a situation that you can have any number of residents, but they must be in something called an existing single-family house. And the answer was a text amendment. It's a text amendment to eliminate simply the reference in the code that says it must be in a single-family house. That is a use that is irrelevant to most medical treatment providing, and it would be irrelevant here. And so it is a very simple modification that is sought. Both the ordinance that, as it's written, we think is worthy of correction, we agree with your staff's assessment of that, we agree with the attorney's assessment of that. We also note respectfully that both state and federal law compels municipalities, when confronted with major issues in their zoning codes, to offer a reasonable accommodation to allow residents who suffer from a disability. With all due respect, we'd respectfully request that this minor adjustment be made. That is to say that the requirement that residentially licensed facilities, which are unlimited in number in the multifamily zone, simply not be insisted on being in a single-family home. Thank you.
Will Metzick. You're going to pass. All right, Jeff Brandt.
I'm with Hills Youth and Family Services. Why are we allowed to speak as the applicant when we get to that section of the agenda?
As the applicant, you would, yes.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
All right. Karen Moorhead.
Karen Moorhead, 943 Southeast 12th Avenue. Thank you, Mayor and council, for listening to all of these beautiful people speak from their heart. I have very little more to say that they haven't already said, and I know all of you weren't seated at the time, but if you were at the last meeting, you heard many, many more speak from the heart. A slight zoning that has been okayed by all of the staff should not be stopped by a couple of people when this size crowd, two nights, shows up to beg for what is right. But I have sat through this before with our police, and sat and had all of the citizens, "Please, please, don't take our police." And that was still going to happen if we didn't get saved by the sheriff. Tonight, we don't have a sheriff to save us. We have a council that has listened, and hopefully listened very, very clearly to their staff and their constituents, and will want to do what's right. And Mr. Mayor, I just leave with one thought, because you and I know each other a long time, and when you put your name down to run a while ago, I said, "Mr. Mayor," at the time, I said, "Ben, what are you thinking?" And you said, "Well, I'd like to really support the school, and I'd really like to see economic development come, for instance, a medical facility." Do you remember telling me that?
No.
And I thought, "Well, that's good," because Patrick Gahn at the time was thinking of one for Highway 97. Now you've had one that fell in your lap, and I'm just hoping that you will think back and see what a great thing this would be for our kids, number one, but for our economics in this town. We need those jobs, and we need those people. So please, vote yes tonight on the zoning amendment.
All right, that closes out the open forum. Brings us to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in removing 7B and 7C to give Blaine an opportunity to vote on the rest of the issues, but probably abstain on those two being at the minutes of the last couple of meetings.
All right, so it's motion and...
I'll second.
Second? All right, so all those in favor of consent agenda, item 7A, and then D, E, and M?
That's correct.
All those... What's that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? Oh, no, you already did that. So that brings us to item seven. Should we do these both together then, Sam?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, so 7B and 7C, that'd be the approving the city council special minutes on February 27th, and the approving the city council workshop minutes that occurred in the same evening, so. B and C.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained?
Abstained, I was absent as well.
Okay. Should I carry this out? Brings us to regular agenda, A, zoning text amendment.
Sir, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to present the zoning text amendment. First, I'd like to explain exactly what the text amendment is, give you a little timeline of the application so far, and provide an outline of the recent economic development impact study. So what the text amendment seeks to do is to remove one sentence that restricts large residential licensed facilities serving more than 10 persons in existing single-family home only, and insert them as a conditional principal use to be residential facility licensed serving more than 10 persons. The timeline of the application begins on January 10th, when it was introduced at the planning commission. There, the planning commission did recommend city council approval. On the 12th of February, it went to council, where there was continued discussion, and it was tabled to February 26th. On February 26th, again, more discussion. The council directed staff to look deeper into formal housing and also collect additional public input. So on March 12th, also, council commissioned the development impact study that I'll outline. And then also on March 14th, holding second planning commission meeting regarding this application, the planning commission heard public testimony, some preliminary economic data was presented, and again, they recommended city council approval. The purpose of the development impact study was to look at the broader impacts. Part of the analysis of zoning text amendments, it's within council's purview, to look at benefits or impacts beyond simply the zoning. And so in this case, the study analyzed tax and local economic impacts of potential land uses that could be present on a site within the multiple-family zoning district. And these land uses that were studied, were used in the study, were senior housing, nursing home, market-rate apartments, retail, office, warehouse, and agriculture. The main findings do report that, and again, this is in general, on a general site, it's from county and state public data, and interviews with developers, and with the, basically the assumption it was on a three-acre site with access to a state highway, and that there would be not a 10-acre site where there'd be phasing, deciding the market couldn't support that sort of development. And so the main findings include that the greatest tax revenue would be derived from a multiple-family or senior housing with some services in the range of $50,000 to $60,000 per year. The development of a nursing home, which would likely be, which could be a nonprofit operator, could negate, I mean, could kind of, it might be likely tax-exempt, but the city could negotiate a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. the city could negotiate a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, to offset that, so that the city could pay for the emergency services and then public works, public infrastructure impacts. And then the greatest economic development impact shown within this study would be a nursing home facility with an estimated annual impact of 8.9 million, and that would be a, for a typical 50-bed facility. And that would be the greatest job creator from those, these impact, from these land uses. This table before you is from the study, and show, it shows how their tax impact ranges from, you know, zero annual dollars from a nursing home and a nonprofit ownership, up to over 60, almost $63,000 for senior housing. And this is based on the improvements, you know, tax revenue, property tax. And then, next, this relates to jobs, and also that, that economic recycling. And here are the, given the same land uses, the estimated impact ranges from about $150,000 for market-rate apartments to almost $9 million for a nursing home. Again, this is somewhat of a general, general study. There is, you know, many impacts that aren't registered here. There's the construction jobs that'd be created during the construction of any of this development. There'd be city fees, such as parkland dedication fees, that the city would receive that aren't included in the study. Something to be said for senior housing and nursing homes is that they're, well, nursing homes in particular, it's largely a recession-proof business, because it doesn't follow the business cycles, like, let's say, for instance, retailer office. And also, as a growing city, the city does, you know, benefit from all development. And, of course, if the city was looking for another interstate exchange, interchange, then that'd be beneficial to show more of a need with more traffic from greater development. Also not included in the study is just the idea of the present value of money, that if any of this development came today versus five or 10 years from now, there's a greater benefit, all other things being equal. So at this point, I'd like to, take any questions from the Plan, from the City Council?
Questions from the council? This is a tough one. This is our turn to talk, not yours.
What are we going to hear from the project team?
What's that?
What are we going to hear from the developer?
Aye, if they wanted to speak.
I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Hills Youth and Family Services. Mayor Winnick, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We have come a long way together. It's been a hard road. Emotions have run high at times. I suspect we are all a little bruised and tired, but all of the questions that have been publicly asked about this text amendment and the project have now been answered. Is the amendment consistent with city policy? Yes. Does the Planning Commission endorse it? Yes. Will it eliminate a decades-old prejudice in the zoning code that permits nursing homes but excludes treatment facilities for children? Yes. Will it protect property owners' rights? Yes. Will it have a positive economic impact? Yes. Will it be a source of community pride? Will it preserve 26 acres of green space? Will it preserve a historic farm site? Do the neighbors support it? Is it safe? Yes, 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 yes. And finally, will it save children's lives? Yes. The only question remaining in many people's minds is why hasn't it been approved already? It is a curious fact that in public debates, even the most obvious and self-evident truths can get lost. 160 years ago, Americans were debating the right of some Americans to hold other Americans as slaves. Somehow, we lost our way in that debate, and it became a debate about states' rights and federalism, and whether the Union must be preserved. Even Lincoln lost his way. Even Lincoln contemplated a "not-in-my-backyard" compromise that would've sent the slaves away to find freedom in another land. But in the end, he set the distractions aside. He listened to his own conscience, and he became, and he became a person worth remembering. You sit here tonight in his shadow. You have heard the people of your city, your county, and your state. They stand and watch to see whether each of you will fulfill the oaths of your office, or whether you will hesitate, abstain, and fail. They stand and ask and hope that each of you will vote to approve the text amendment, to abolish the discrimination in the code, and to allow the life-changing work with children to happen here. Thank you.
I'll have the council for discussion.
This has been through the Planning Commission twice, which is unprecedented, as far as I'm concerned, and I think you guys already know how I feel about this. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Forest Lake, and I don't understand why it would even be in a debate on it. So, particularly the economic impact with the whole thing, that there's so many things that still need to be debated along the way, along with the conditional use permit and all that, that I'm totally in favor of this text amendment.
Ed?
I'd like to ask the city attorney, can this facility currently be built anywhere in Forest Lake?
Mayor, members of the council, there are some zoning districts within the city of Forest Lake where this would be allowed as a principal conditional use. Specifically, if you'll give me a second here, I think I have a chart. So a licensed residential facility serving more than 10 persons is allowed in the conservancy district, the agricultural district, and the rural residential districts as a conditional accessory use. It's allowed in the single-family zoning district as a conditional principal use, which is what the proposed text amendment before you this evening would also create that use. It's allowed as a conditional principal use within the mixed residential, single-family, and townhome, or MXR-1 district, and it's allowed as a conditional accessory use in that zoning district for seven to 10 residents. In the MXR-2, MXR-3, and egg-preserve overlay districts, this is allowed as a conditional accessory use, and again, this being a licensed residential facility serving more than 10 persons.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ed.
So, in our, when we discussed this in February, I talked about how the criteria for evaluating this particular zoning text amendment is quite, is quite simple and is laid out very clearly in code. It's in our packet today on 55, and I spoke at that point on how I felt like we had met that criteria. It was council's will at that point to send it back to Planning Commission, do an economic analysis update, and also to have more community engagement, and I haven't heard a thing that comes, that changes a position from where we were a month ago. But I didn't have the hesitations then, so I think, you know, I would hope we could have some conversation tonight on, have we met the mark? And, you know, did Planning Commission do what we asked them to do? Did the economic impact study do what we asked them to do? And then going back to what are, what is our job and how we evaluate this based on the requirements, I have a hard time not getting to yes.
All right. Well, I did attend that second Planning Commission meeting as well. What was presented to us to get sent back to that Planning Commission, and what the commissioners actually talked about, I felt was, you know, there was a significant difference between those two. So I'm not sure if, you know, that, that second time through really made any clarifications with them at all on it. There's, there's too many questions that are yet unanswered as to why, how.
But, so, and let us, let us, let us talk. So the what and how related to the project or related to the zoning amendment? It's?
Related to the zoning amendment. You know, what?
Let's talk about that. What?
I don't know why, if it didn't meet the conditions to begin with, it was brought forward, but not given that it's a residential treatment facility, this opens it up to anything in, in these districts. It could be a sex offender treatment facility. It could be anything. And that's what these zoning codes are for, to, you know, help us. And I don't, I don't support changing it.
But something like, let's go down that path for a minute. Something like a sex offender program would have criteria within the conditional use permit around public health and public safety. And so we would have an ability to exclude, and Donovan or Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, under that path, we would, we have the criteria today to exclude for those purposes if we felt we needed to. I appreciate the, what does it open up the doors to, but I keep coming back to, I feel like we have the belts and suspenders within that conditional use criteria to manage those risks for future projects that might come forward.
Well, as a resident said earlier, it could open up Pandora's Box, and there's, there's plenty of places where this does meet the zoning.
This is such a unique spot here with the, the animal therapy, and the barn's already in place and all that, and it still would, to me, relieve that kind of a country atmosphere out there, and I see no reason why this is even an argument. I don't think we're, I don't think we're jeopardizing anything in this city for that.
I guess everybody's kind of waiting for me to talk. I gotta read a little bit. I'm not as well seasoned as these people, so.
Welcome.
First, I'd like to speak myself. I'm entering this position amidst a topic that is surrounded by compassion and emotion. If this vote were as simple as voting for the need for a mental health facility for youth, or if this type of facility should be welcomed into our community, it would be a 5-0 vote. I applaud the good people at the Hills for the work they do for our youth in need. I think that everyone knows someone who can benefit from a facility of this nature. But the decision before us is one of a zoning issue that will affect numerous neighborhoods, not just the one picked for this project. Had the project been fixated on a different parcel of land that is already zoned to accommodate such a facility, there wouldn't be such this difficult decision at hand. With the comprehensive plan just around the corner, we may soon be able to provide better clarity for future, more flexibility, and greater opportunities for our community. I wish I could see this decision tabled for a short time until we could take a considerable look at the bigger picture and address the zoning questions in tandem with the comprehensive plan, or even consider just addressing just this individual parcel. Through my research and understanding, I find that the proposed language is not of the essence of the ordinance as it was adopted. The focus of the existing ordinance is that of permanent residences and specifically mentioned, single-family homes. For this reason, at this time, I cannot support amending the ordinance with the proposed text.
So let's, let's talk a little bit about that. The, the proposed amendment is, so you mentioned a single-family home, which is the existing, kind of the language within our code today. Fair to say antiquated for any sort of criteria for allowing licensed facilities. I, I started, and if Eric Lanis were in the room and Susan Young, oh, they're in the room, they will say, they will, they will testify that I also started with a very similar approach of start with no, on maybe there's a reason this is excluded. And what I would encourage you to think about is, we, this is a residential facility, and the question that I kept getting asked of me is, well, if it's residential, where should it belong? In a residential district. And it was how I got comfortable that this wasn't an intentional omission from our, of our code, but rather something that happens haphazardly as township code is merged with city of Forest Lake code. And, you know, I just encourage you to think about that of, if it's residential, where does it belong? And, in my opinion, residential belongs with residential. It's a continuum of care model. If we are all sick and in a situation where we need help, we want, and we're going to live there, we want the amenities of a residential district.
But part, part of that, too, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, I believe that property is going to be zoned commercial. Is that true? In the comprehensive plan, is that property listed for commercial?
I'd have to check with Donovan, I don't know for sure.
Is that true?
The current draft, future, future land use plan would zone as mixed use, which is a commercial zoning, you know, land use.
Which means they could go for a permit tomorrow. And why we're arguing about this is beyond me.
Ed, what do you? Yeah, well, the only thing I would like to add is, and this has really been a tough, tough thing. I've been Googling and doing everything I can to try, and I'm sure all the other council members have, too. And I'm pretty familiar with Prairie Care out in Brooklyn Park. I pass it every day. Prairie Care, I believe, has six locations. One out in Brooklyn Park, which is a tremendous facility, if you look at their reviews, they're doing fantastic work with the young people that they represent. But if you look at their locations, they have one on 610, and if you drive past that facility, there's a Hy-Vee grocery store, there's probably 14 or 15 warehouses, there's probably a Target Center right down the road for, I mean, Target, by the way, they're corporate center, not, not a facility for sports. It's all, it's all industrial and commercial. If you look at, if you look at, I believe, their other facility, one is in Maplewood, it's near Maplewood Mall. They have one in Adina, I believe, by Ridgedale Mall. Those, those center, all of their facilities are in large commercial areas, not residential. And then if you look at the Star Tribune last week, just ran an article, the state concluded a study on nursing homes, these types of facilities, and the general consensus was that they're, and they use the word discriminating. We are discriminating against people that have these types of problems. And by that, they meant the fact of large residential facilities have not been effective. They are better to be in smaller facilities and integrated into neighborhoods than these large facilities. And that was just a two-page article in the Star Tribune last week, and that's by the state. And that was a long study, and I'm sure all you people that are members of your organization out there have read that study. So I'm, I'm really torn. I have no problem with that facility. I don't think they're going to be a danger to any neighborhood. You're, the, the people are not coming out, the, the people will not be a situation where it, in any way, shape, or form, is going to be a danger to our community. My question is, is it in the right place? Why not, if it can locate in Forest Lake right now, without this, why not some other place? Number two, I've looked back at Forest Lake, and I keep hearing about, and I'm going to be on the financial side now, I keep hearing about Forest Lake, what a great place to come and raise a young family, because our taxes are fairly reasonable, and they are. But I want to look back at this city center, took off the third or fourth highest taxed property, and turned it into zero for taxes for the city. We've built a YMCA, which is greatly accepted for members of the city, and has been a very huge success, but no tax revenue to the city. We've done Willowbrook Church, Family Pathways, Goodwill, Fenway Park. Fenway Park, tremendous investment on the part of the city, returns it. Is it a great thing for the community? Is it a great thing for the, all the people that use it? Yes. Does it return any revenue to the city? No. If we keep going down this path, these are all nice to has, but who's going to pay for them? Where's the money going to come from? You're taking a prime piece of property that I believe you did it partially commercial and partly residential. It's probably going to generate in the neighborhood of a half million dollars in taxes for the city. And in perpetuity, if you do this, you're going to get zero, zero. Now, that's, that's the way I'm looking at this. There's nothing to stop that facility to bring those jobs here at any of the other locations that are available right now. Nothing. And I would vote yes. But I don't believe that's the right location.
On the implications of business and taxes, it's important, Ed. We had Carol Sanderson up here state that we have a couple of empty lots that would be prime for commercial use. I think that keeping the taxes low is something that brings in business and that does weigh consideration. Going back to something another gentleman had said, that courage is doing what you think is right despite personal consequences. He also said that doing the right thing is easy. If doing the right thing was always easy, you wouldn't need courage. It would be easy for me to walk in as a new seat and be everyone's hero to say yes and, and put that in there. However, as I do my research and I do my discerning, I understand that there's other principles that would have to be violated in order to be that hero.
Let's talk a little bit more about economic impact. So 150 jobs, and this is an opportunity for us to have 150 jobs in this community that the payroll checks are not signed by taxpayers of Forest Lake. That's impactful. Take off school districts, take off the city of Forest Lake, and we would have a privately funded payroll of 150. And you're right on the cost of property taxes. However, when you look at the overall economic impact, it's $9 million a year that we were contributing to the economy. And we have plenty of undeveloped land.
It's $9 million in, in a payroll. It's not $9 million. Mara, it's not $9 million that's coming to Forest Lake.
There are $9 million. So the economic impact, when you're magnifying from jobs and what that, those dollars staying in the community. Dan, confirm, but the economic impact was $9 million, was $9 million from the ELLER study of a facility of this type. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, it relates to payroll and indirect recycling of those dollars through, you know, local goods and services purchased by people, you know, who receive those payroll dollars.
We reflect overall economic impact, and so we-
Every business, every, everything is going to have an indirect impact on something.
But it's not a goose egg. It is-
There's also other impact too with this facility. There's going to be people coming from all over the place to visit, to visit patients here. And it has an impact also. There's motels and restaurants and all kinds of things that are impacted by that. It isn't just something where people come and go back and forth to work at.
There are definitely pros and cons on every side. No one's, no one's going to say it's a completely negative situation if it didn't pass.
Because if you were, if you were going to vote for it in another zoning area, the, the taxes would be affected the same way.
Same way.
Identical.
Same conversation.
The whole, the whole issue is really the zoning tax.
I disagree that the taxes would be affected the same way. That, that particular parcel right there lends itself right now to residential. If you went to a different zoning area, that's commercial. There'd be a totally different impact on taxes. So I disagree with the fact that you say that it's going to be a one for one. I don't believe that.
I do, I'm sorry.
Well, hearing no further discussion, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning text amendment as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
All right. Bailey?
Let's have some further discussion, please. Can we?
Further discussion?
Further discussion? So a couple of months ago, I had a little battle with the Star Tribune because they said Forest, Forest Lake was getting ready to say no to 150 jobs in mental health. And I think we know that Forest Lake is not saying no to 150 jobs in mental health. Whatever the vote is here tonight, let's watch what the headline reads tomorrow because it's clear what Forest Lake is saying.
Very clear.
Any further discussion? All right, Bailey, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Backus?
No.
Councilmember Bain?
Yes.
Councilmember Husnick?
Yes.
Councilmember Eigner?
No.
And Mayor Winnick?
No.
This is what, this is what Forest Lake is all about.
One of the conditions of appointment to that seat, according to Mr. Eigner, was that he not support-
So be in touch with your law back.
I understand that nobody imagined that that's a fair point. Thank you, Donald. Right? Yes, thank you.
What would you like them to build in my backyard?
Yeah, Glenn, that's one of the neighbors.
You know, I'll, I'll be glad to schedule an appointment and meet with you, but I'm not going to discuss it during our meeting right now. My heart goes out to you too. And we're not saying no, we're saying no to this.
I was published on June 1st of 2001. Okay, Forest Lake Times, this, I was a guest editor for the Forest Lake Press, was in now defunct. And what I wrote down in here exactly what happened, which is nice as ever.
Call this meeting by order.
Mayor, Mr. Council, before we move on, we do have to go on the record as to those who voted in favor of denial. Do you go on the record as to why they voted for or favored denial so they can develop the planning effects of that?
So we want to go on the record right now. In any particular order?
Yeah, just those who voted no would be required to go on the record.
Yeah, I'll go first. Let, let's wait for the noise to quiet down.
May I suggest a five-minute recess?
Okay, Mayor and Council, I want to go on record as to why I voted no for the zoning text amendment change. My reasons are not because of the project. I think the project has very good merit. My reasons are, number one, it could be located here tomorrow should the applicant choose to, they choose not to. Number two, I really believe that the financial impact to the city will be huge. Not from the standpoint of receiving those jobs, but from the standpoint of the tax revenue that we will forego if we went ahead with that project at that location. So those are my main reasons.
This is for the council. They're not in discussion in open right now.
Not if they don't pay tax.
Next one you want me to do?
I would. So we have to comply with Met Council's vision for affordable housing. There's not very many parcels left that are open to this under the current comp plan. I understand we're in a transition. Can't be supported to make an exception that would jeopardize being in compliance with Met Council's vision.
That's not true, correct? It's, it's in staff report that we are, we have sufficient supply to meet Met Council affordable housing.
He's just reading into record what his reasons are.
I would just advise against that we-
That was a completely false statement you made, Glenn. That's completely false.
I believe he can make his own statement.
Yeah, exactly. Anything else you want to add on that? I, I'm voting against it. Tax impact is, is tremendous, so that was one reason. As we're in the middle of our comp plan, it is not the time to try to change zoning at the, the zoning text anyway. So those are the two big reasons why I'm not supporting it at this time.
Are we going to disband the planning commission? Apparently their word is no good, so we might as well just disband.
I believe the, we're supposed to be giving reasons why we voted against. Sam, you voted for, so I don't believe they asked for reasons for that.
No, I really believe that what was presented to the planning commission was far different than what's been presented to us. We're dealing with a lot of different factors than they were, but the conversation at planning commission level and conversation at council level over the same thing were significantly different. But yeah, let's-
So, Your Honor, before I, the, the reason that I had asked everyone who voted against the zoning ordinance text amendment to state on the record their reasons is because I'm in the process of preparing a resolution which will memorialize the findings of fact for those who voted against the zoning ordinance text amendment. So I want to ensure, because I'm doing this quickly and in real time, that I'm accurately writing down what was reflected. So if, with your permission, if I may go back and confirm with everyone who spoke their reasons just to make sure that I'm not missing anything with respect to their consideration of the factors that are required to be taken into consideration pursuant to the city code section regarding zoning ordinance text amendments and their articulated reasons for their vote. I'll start, I believe, with Councilmember Eigner. You spoke first. I have down that your reasons for your vote and your no vote were that because the facility could be located here tomorrow should the applicant choose to. And secondly, because the financial impact of the city would be huge from the standpoint of the tax revenue, it would forego. Did I accurately capture what you stated?
That's correct.
Were there any other reasons that you wanted to articulate for the record?
No, just, just the only thing that I would like to clarify is I think the financial reasons for the tax difference would be that particular parcel versus other parcels of the city.
Councilmember Backus? I have down that you articulated that we need to comply with the Met Council's vision for affordable, affordable housing. There aren't a lot of parcels open in the city, and this would jeopardize Met Council's vision in affordable housing in the city. Is that accurate?
Yes. I'd also make another statement. Licensed treatment facilities are allowed as accessory uses in this zoned area to change it from an allowed accessory to an accepted principal. Seems to be disingenuous to the intent of the original purpose of that ordinance.
Just if I may read it back to you just to confirm. Licensed treatment facilities, licensed residential treatment facilities are allowed as accessory uses in this zoning district to change and allow from accessory to principal seems to be disingenuous to the intent of the original ordinance. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Mayor Winnick? I have down, the first reason for your vote was that the tax impact from this would be tremendous. And the second is that in the, we're in the middle of the comprehensive plan update, and now is not the time to change zoning. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, the tax impact would be negative. You know, the impact would be negative.
So I have the tax impact is tremendous and would be negative as the first reason. And the second is that the city's in the middle of its comprehensive plan amendment process, and now is not the time to change zoning.
Yes, and I'd like to also add onto that that changing the text amendment would open up a lot of unanswered questions, and, you know, we haven't fully explored that, so. Pandora's box, if you want to put in there.
So to reiterate, the city's in the middle of its comprehensive plan amendment process, and now is not the time to change zoning. Changing the text would open up a lot of unanswered questions that we haven't explored. It would be a Pandora's box. Is that accurate?
Very good. Thank you.
Before I stop typing, is there anything anyone who voted against the zoning ordinance text amendment wanted to add regarding the consideration of the standards found in 153037E? Anything in particular, or just a reference that those were considered as part of the decision-making process?
The actual language was part of my consideration, yes.
Anyone else?
I shouldn't say that was the driving part.
Okay, I'll just make a note of that. And sorry, I'm just trying to get this accurately. This is-
Take your time.
Not something we normally do in real time.
You want us to take a short break so you can get it all?
Nope, I just need to get your, I'm sorry, if that's okay, I can, if you want to take a break, Glenn, but I will just need everyone's words and rationale for their decision. I just want to make sure I'm reiterating it correctly before we bring it forward and we have to make a decision on it. Councilmember Backus, I have down that a driving part of your decision was consideration of the standards found in city code section 153.0737E, which are the factors that are required to be taken into consideration when considering a zoning ordinance text amendment. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Councilmember Eigner, anything further on your rationale?
No, other, nothing that I want to put in the record.
Council, and Mayor Winnick?
You know, the only thing I'd like to add onto that would be that I attended the planning commission meeting, and I believe that what was presented there was different significantly enough that I think it affected the vote at the planning commission.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So the plan this evening, it will be for this resolution which memorializes the findings of fact and reasons for denial articulated by those who voted no this evening. Will be brought back yet this evening for council review and consideration. It's not a second vote on the application itself. It's simply a vote to approve the language found in the resolution as the reasons articulated for the no votes this evening. So I believe that that will be brought back before you yet this evening.
And at this point, it'll be brought back between items F and G. Someone will be able to have that printed and ready for consideration.
All right. All right.
It's just the prevailing side that does that. So we're going to go on to 8B, the massage license ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'm just pulling up the item here before I can get off. Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you this evening for consideration an ordinance which would repeal and replace Chapter 115 of the City Code, which is the chapter regulating massage businesses and massage therapists. By way of background, there were some issues that were raised with respect to some of the city's massage businesses and some concerns that led staff to take a harder look at the city's existing massage therapy business and therapist licensing ordinance back in the fall and winter of 2017. That resulted in a work session in January of 2018 whereby a proposed ordinance repealing and replacing the entirety of Chapter 115 was brought before the council for consideration and discussion. There was some discussion at that time regarding the proposed provisions of that ordinance. There were some questions raised by council and requests for staff follow-up. Staff did reach out to all existing license holders within the city and asked for their feedback. We provided them with a copy of the city's existing ordinance, a copy of the proposed ordinance. Again, it's not redlined because it's a wholesale repeal and replace, and a chart that provided detail about what really changed between those two ordinances. We received feedback from one local license holder, a couple of concerns from a salon owner with respect to things such as posting rates on the wall, which is, you know, fairly common if you go to a massage-only business, but in a hair salon context, you know, that's very difficult, all the stylists are different, and things like that. So we took their feedback, as well as some feedback the council provided to staff and feedback provided by another citizen before that initial work session, and made some additional revisions to the ordinance you have before you here this evening, and are bringing it back for discussion and consideration or further direction from the council. Primarily, the ordinance would essentially refresh the city's existing ordinance, which was enacted about a decade ago. Since that time, a number of concerns have been raised in a variety of different contexts in cities to ensure that these types of businesses are, in fact, legitimately-run businesses, provide therapeutic massage services, and don't serve as fronts for prostitution. The ordinance seeks to do that by tightening up the licensing requirements for both individual massage therapists as well as businesses. It provides a clear and articulate process and grounds for the city to deny a license or suspend or revoke a license based on certain conduct, and ensures that massage therapists are licensed and have minimum educational criteria to ensure that they have a background in providing massage services. I would note that the ordinance, and I'm not sure where the council wants to go with this this evening, at this time or if tabled to a future evening, because it's a lengthy ordinance, there is a summary publication option that was put in there. That does require a four-fifths vote of the council if the council were wanting to move forward with this ordinance or this ordinance with amendments that would allow publication of only a summary of the ordinance instead of the entirety of the ordinance. So with that, Bailey and I would stand for any questions the council has.
You know, Bridget, I think that's most appropriate talk since...
Bridget, I have a couple of questions. Number one, we only had one respondent of all the existing salons?
If I could speak to that response rate, when we did our last ordinance update for the, I think it was a 2:00 AM liquor change, the response rate there was about one or two as well. We did kind of the same follow-through method. This time, we did the same outreach efforts, and it's not uncommon to get a fairly low response rate.
Is the reach-out, how's the reach-out performed?
The reach-out was done to the current license holders, so whatever address we use when we send over renewal forms, that was the address that we used, so they were current.
Correct.
So, but we have not mailed out a copy of what the proposal might be to all the legit, or all the salons?
Not, well, if they were a current, if they were a current location license or a current therapist holder license, they received a copy of it. If they were a potential, I mean...
No, I'm just talking about existing.
Yeah, existing ones, they all received.
They have a copy, and only one response?
Yep, yeah, they all received the same packet of information, which includes new...
So, so in my mind, I'm sure they all got the information.
Yep, they all received.
And number two, the only thing in reviewing the packet, when I reviewed it, is I thought a million dollars, is it a million dollars?
A million-dollar liability per...
I thought that was pretty substantial for a business of that type.
That wasn't even for the business, I think that was for each.
The individual.
Yeah, so I thought it was pretty steep.
I had that initial impression. Did a little bit of research, found it's semi-common for them to carry that, not always mandatory. One question I had on it was the lengthy description of what massage services are. With that language abbreviated, it says, you know, parts of the body with the hands or, and then went into a bunch of devices, forearms, elbows, knees, or some other times used for massage. I think that language needs to be put in there to try to take out some gray area. I think that's a common practice.
Well, I guess I just, I see this as just such an overreach of government to try to regulate something by changing something else. We're trying to stop prostitution, you know, point-blank. We have many, many legitimate massage therapists and places to get a massage in Forest Lake, and they've operated for a long time. You know, when I read through this, the million-dollar liability, one thing that caught my eye, 600 hours of training before, you know, there's so many things in here that are just such an overreach of government, trying to regulate something else. We already have laws against prostitution that deal with that, and if we have laws, if there's a licensed massage therapist that crosses that line, you know, we can revoke their license. To try and, you know, make all these regulations, it's, I think, way, way excessive, way too burdensome for those businesses, for those legitimate massage therapists, you know, to, you know, everything from you can't have a lock on the door. I think I'd rather have the door locked if you got valuables or anything else in there. I, you know, I just, I think we're trying to do something good here, but it's the wrong way to do it. We, you know, we're regulating massage therapy to address prostitution. Well, what if they open up something and it's, you know, aromatherapy instead, or physical therapy, or, you know, they just change one word and they're back in business? So I really don't see the effectiveness of this other than creating a lot more paperwork for local businesses. Chief Peterson, do we have strong enough prostitution laws to be able to address if we get a complaint on a massage parlor, massage business?
Well, it's covered under federal and state law, but not under the city ordinance.
Correct, but you enforce federal or state law as well?
Sure, yeah.
Right? So in fact, if they were caught doing something like that, in essence, we could shut them down.
If they were literally caught, you know, that does not give us the right to be in there and, you know, observing when the act happens, you know, that's extremely difficult. With this ordinance, it actually assists us in other ways, and that's why we had such a difficult time with a couple of the past massage parlors that we tried to regulate and enforce law. And so that's one of the reasons why we needed to update this ordinance to assist us.
Any specifics that were updated in there that you needed?
There were a lot of items and things that were updated, just, I guess I can't speak to, without having the old ordinance with me, I can't speak to that. But there, this is quite, you know, an upgrade. That was definitely needed.
And was this, I guess whoever can answer, but was this modeled after another city's ordinance, or were did this, was this completely ours right from the ground up?
Mayor, members of the council, so I took a look at a number of different cities ordinances. These included Bloomington, Inver Grove Heights, West St. Paul, and Minneapolis as well, and took some kind of provisions from all of them. So, for example, the million-dollar insurance policy was common to, I think, all of those cities. I did do a research myself because it was raised, and it looks like you can buy a million-dollar policy for about $170, I just in Googling it online, so it sounds a lot worse than it is, but it was sort of an amalgamation of a number of other cities ordinances, but primarily modeled off of, I would say, Inver Grove Heights and West St. Paul's as the starting ground.
Clarification, is that 170 annually, monthly?
A year, per year.
Per each masseuse, then?
Correct, correct. So the liability policy is required only of the massage therapist and not of the business themselves. So in theory, if the therapist did something that injured you or did something inappropriate as part of that massage, such that there was liability created by their actions, that would, you know, be the person you'd probably go after with their insurance policy.
Bridget, if you equate that to, let's say, a hair salon or a barber, what must they carry in the way of liability?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a good question. I don't know, because I know that they are licensed through the state of Minnesota. If you are a hairstylist or a nail estheticist, I'm not going to say the word, a nail technician, you do obtain licensing through the state, and I'm not sure if part of that license contains an insurance requirement or not.
I would hate to see us single out one industry over the other. I mean, to me, a hairstylist or a barber could, not in the way of prostitution, but in the way of, you know, ruining your hair, for lack of a better term, could, could do just as much damage or more, and they're not being required to do this, as far as I know.
One of, so we've had a couple of situations that have kind of caused this to come up on the agenda, and Mayor, I agree with you to some degree on, let's not overshoot the mark. But one of my concerns on why I continue to support doing something is, Bridget, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we had the applicant from the massage place that we actually took back the license, or revoked their license, if they were to come back in today and apply, would we have grounds for denial, given our existing ordinances? That's the mark that I'm most concerned about. I suspect that because there may not have been a conviction, because convictions take a mighty long time, we are still at risk of having to grant that license if it goes through the process. And I'm, so, I'm looking for something for us to up the bar without being to the point of being punitive to legitimate businesses. And I've spoken, I've spoken to one who's said, has actually asked for it, of, please, help us set ourselves aside as being legitimate, ethical, law-abiding, do something to help us move this industry forward, and to really raise the bar.
So I think even with this new ordinance that business you're talking about would still comply.
But it's been revoked. I mean, we did, under the existing ordinance...
No, we never renewed it.
We, no, the, the two situations, there was the situation of the, what was the...
There was two. There was one in previous year that there was an actual revocation of the business license and a therapist license, and then there was one where they withdrew the application at the last, yeah, so there's two.
Then just the requirement that it's, that they have, you know, had a license revoked in another jurisdiction, I think that's information we want to know. If a million dollars is too high, I don't need to die on that, right? Like, we can come back off of that. It's not intended to be punitive, it's intended to be, so that we aren't a target of those, because this is what happens, say, people who want to operate those types of businesses are looking for cities with weak ordinances, and the, and the process just doesn't catch up.
I would just like to ask Chief Peterson, irregardless of this ordinance or the old ordinance, what impediments do you have that, what do you need in order to stop a type of business that would bring in prostitution? What, what has been hindering us in the past?
Definitely, you know, I feel that our outdated ordinance definitely has hindered us a little bit during our past investigations. And honestly, when it comes to prostitution, you know, unless somebody comes forward, it really is a pretty in-depth investigation that has to occur for us to be able to, you know, literally charge somebody and get a conviction. But definitely, this updated ordinance, you know, does help. There's some languages that were, that were put in there, some other things were updated. You know, so, a lot of it, I shouldn't say a lot of it, some of it is the same as the prior ordinance, when you need the 600 hours of, you know, education and training, the hours, things like that, having their license placed in a public area in the facility. But definitely, some of the concerns that we had seen from the prior massage parlors was, you know, the things that were put on, on the internet, some of the photos of kids, things like that, which was...
But this will not, this will not change any of that.
Actually, there is language in this new one that does assist us in enforcing and bringing it forward to the city council for possible revocation and...
Could you direct us to that section?
Suspended. What's that?
Could you direct us to that section of it, for chance?
Sorry, I went into the, the old ordinance, and it popped me out of the...
I'm scrolling to Councilmember Backus, I'll see if I can find it here.
And while you're looking, Chief, is there anything preventing you, like you do the tobacco checks and whatever, from locking in an organization and making an inspection? Or is that not...
Yeah, we can make an inspection, but, you know, you don't, we won't be able to see if there was anything.
But you could send in an undercover person to...
Yes, that has, yep, that has happened.
Let's talk a little bit about what that actually looks like, right? We are sending in a city employee to essentially be assaulted in that scenario. I mean, just, I would hope that we are looking to, for that to be used, not as the primary enforcement mechanism, but only when used at last resort, when a, a case has to be put together. Sending in a city employee to be assaulted is not a primary means I want for enforcement.
I know they get used the word assaulted, I think it'd be proposition, maybe, but...
Oh, well, that's an assault.
Well, I'm concerned that, no matter what kind of ordinance we write or pass, you know, somebody with, can, with the educational credentials can get the license, but they can hire, call them a towel girl, or apprentice, or whatever, a nail thing, and you're going to be right back to where we are now. I mean...
I got one more point of clarity for this new ordinance revision. One of the things that staff struggled with in the last time we were faced with an issue with it was the inspection angle. I believe the old ordinance, we had very limited reason to go into the business, it was more for like health and safety type instances, and the new ordinance here under Section 115-08 does allow staff and our police to go in anytime the business is open. So if we do have a perceived issue with the current location, we're able to go in, you know, under the current ordinance. Or before, we had to kind of go back and look through the old order and say, what can we, what's our avenue, what's our mechanism to go into this facility, you know, and still not violate their rights. Here, we have more, basically, the ability to go in, you know, as we need to, to verify, you know, that, you know, so if we have an instance where we have a perception of prostitution happening, that's enough just cause for us to go in there, not execute a full search one, but at least to take a look to see what's in there. Versus before, we had to go in with a health and safety element. That was one of the, one of the tighten, that helped tighten up. This new ordinance tightens that language up and gives us a little bit more of an ability to, to do inspections.
It's getting kind of scary, given, you know, with all due respect, Chief, but, you know, just to say the police have the right to come in and search your premises anytime they want, that might actually put the city at a lot more liability than not searching at all. But I, again, I just, I think this is way overreaching, and we're trying to address prostitution by regulating massage therapy. And yes, one can be a front for the other, but... And yes, one can be a front for the other, but there's way, way, way more legitimate massage therapists and legitimate businesses. I mean, just the hundred and seventy dollars per therapist for insurance, I mean, they're not making eighty bucks an hour, a hundred bucks an hour, you know, to be a massage therapist. There's fifty of them in Forest Lake, that's eight thousand dollars a year that, you know, was spent just on insurance. I would like to give the police tools, they need to enforce prostitution, to regulate it out of the city. By doing this is not, I think, the way to do it, so.
I understand where Mayor's coming from as far as the inspections, and try not to breach people's right to privacy. We don't want to be seen as harassment. Looking at the hours of training, education, it's my understanding that six hundred hours is a typical education collegiate expected time to complete the program, to get accredited. So, there's some things in here that make plenty of sense. I'm kind of curious, what are the key components that the police department is looking for that's going to aid them the most in trying to keep the correct businesses operating? We can find some of those key components and focus in on them, and maybe shed some of the other things that are not as beneficial to you and would make things easier for businesses to operate freely. I'd like to look at those options.
And to answer your question, Councilmember Backus, I found it was 115.10BI, as in boy, Ida. Just even that language definitely helps. But there are others as well, and unfortunately, I apologize, I did not put down together a list for you.
No, that's helpful.
He said 115.01B?
One zero.
Oh, one zero, okay.
Yeah, BI.
Mayor members of the council, if there are some concerns about the breadth of the proposed revisions, I could certainly take the opportunity to speak with the chief regarding kind of the law enforcement perspective, and see if we can't, instead of doing a full repeal and replace, bring it back with just some, maybe some red lines on those key kind of law enforcement licensing related issues, pull back on the other issues such as the insurance policy and things like that, and focus more on the public health, welfare, and safety, the key pieces to that, if that's something that the council wants to provide direction on. I could certainly work with the chief on that.
The other question I had, and in the past two cases that did come in front of the council, and you look at applications, and they, you know, I'm a masseuse out of California, and I've got these credentials, but we have no way of vetting that. I mean, it's like, you can produce pieces of paper at will. So, I question how, you know, we can write the health releases over, and you've got to have this, you've got to have that. If someone wants to break the law, they're going to, they're going to find a way.
Does, does the state also license massage therapists, or is it up to the individual city?
Mayor members of the council, my understanding is it's up to individual cities, which is one of the things the legislature has taken a look at in the past, is kind of some universal standards, much like, again, hairstylists and nail technicians, those are licensed through the state, but we're not there with massage therapists, and that's why a number of cities have adopted their own licensing ordinances. And again, they vary as far as, as you pointed out, how restrictive they are, how intense they are, based on what the city wants, how they want to handle that licensing process.
I'm just wondering if it might be better for us to, you know, just to lobby the state or, you know, do something to where we can get a statewide standard versus trying to update ours and find it obsolete in six months or...
Yeah, I just would like to add, I have no problem with passing this, I have a huge problem with how you're going to enforce it. We can pass all kinds of laws and regulations, but I don't know that it's going to change anything.
Are we open to, as Bridget mentioned, having a red line version come back with some updates to this? I'm looking for anything north of what we have today and improved from what we have today, but there's a whole number of scenarios that I could support. I think we're looking for the area where we have the most consensus. Personally.
I would concur with Councilman, Councilperson Baines' statement that I think our goal should be to prevent them from locating here to begin with. And I don't know that regulation making it tougher on the ones that are already here and performing admirably makes it any better.
We were successful in the pressure on the, you know, the organization that decided on their own to not seek, you know, it was...
But it wasn't because of the ordinance, it was because, I believe, the chief and, but I think it was a sustained effort of everything, putting a squad car out there to whatever, that's a, will make these go away.
Combination of efforts, but the triggering event was that they're, you know, they were up for renewal, and they chose to not be renewed, and whatever we can do to keep the standards at the appropriate level. Again, the goal isn't to be punitive to anybody who wants to do good work.
But I want to go back to, if a person applies to be a therapist, or especially to open a business, what type of vetting with their credentials do we do? And who does that?
Even just to do the Google check, though, that staff can do to see licenses that have been revoked from other jurisdictions, there's value in that. And to just have that simple standard of, have you already been revoked by somebody else? Because if you aren't, we don't want you. That's north of what we have today.
I have no problem with that, I would agree.
All right, so, let's staff come back with some updates.
Do we need a motion to table, or shall we?
We haven't really done a vote on it, so I don't think we need to.
I think you could just, at this point, direct staff to revisit it and perhaps bring back a red line version at a work session.
With that, I'd like to see some of the items that the police department thinks is going to be the most helpful for them with those red line items.
In addition to that, and not to lay the burden on Chief Peterson, I think Washington County has a huge input into this type of operation, and maybe some collaboration with them as to what might they need to have more teeth.
That Sex Trafficant Task Force has, I think, some, has developed, started to develop some model guidelines of things that they would recommend all of the communities implement.
But I'd like to get everybody on the same page, and just say, hey, because it's not going to be our police department in Washington County, it's going to be a collaboration to solve this.
Well, and I think maybe with, if council's okay, we'd have staff direct a letter to our representative, Deppner, to initiate some legislation. I think it would also be wise to see about reaching out to other communities to get some support on that.
Senator Housley to that list as well.
Exactly.
I do have one other question. Is there a age requirement on, what must be twenty-one?
It's eighteen, Mayor members of the council, it's eighteen years old to hold a massage therapist license.
Is that by our discretion?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more discussion there, should we move on? Dan, let's talk about the airport lease.
Mayor members of the council, at the last Airport Commission meeting, which was held on April fourth, the Airport Commission met and discussed adjustments to the base lease rate that was charged out at the current, out of the Forest Lake Airport. The current lease rates have the rate set at eleven cents a square foot for non-commercial, plus a flat rate charge of two eighty, and then point one, or, excuse me, sixteen point five cents a square foot for commercial, plus a flat rate charge of two eighty. And those rates were adjusted back in 2016 to those current rates. When the Airport Commission met and discussed the lease rates adjustments, they're recommending adjusting the rates down to ten point three cents a square foot for non-commercial, plus the flat rate charge of two eighty, and then fifteen point four five cents a square foot for commercial. The two eighty was not, was not part of the adjustment discussion, since that was outside of the base lease rent. But I just put that in there as to say that it is still included, if the rates get adjusted down to two eighty, it's still going to be part of the rates that are charged. The recommended increase is fourteen point five percent, which, when you look at the Midwest CPI from twenty-eight, two thousand and eight to current, that is the current increase in CPI. And if you look at the language in the lease, the lease does state that CPI is considered a reasonable rent increase, and the language in the lease does specify that rent increases shall be considered reasonable.
Can you back up one second? You said a fourteen point two five percent increase?
Fourteen point five percent increase in CPI. So, the...
Fourteen point five increase, but we've actually lowered...
Yeah, they were, let me pull up the memo here, because the rates that were charged in two thousand and eight, I'm sorry, I should have probably clarified that. So, the rates in two thousand and eight were nine cents a square foot for non-commercial, and thirteen point five cents a square foot for commercial. You can see that, it is in the, it's in the packet under, on the secondary page of my memo. So, they were looking at the two thousand and eight rates, and that's a fourteen point five percent increase off the two thousand and eight rates. So, there is a reduction from the current rates, however, if you go back to the rates that were established in two thousand and eight, that's where that fourteen point five percent was applied, to get you the ten point three for non-commercial, and the fifteen point four five for commercial. So, that was a recommendation at the Airport Commission for the current lease rates, which would be effective for the next two years, to be reconsidered in the next odd year, which would be 2020, for reconsideration. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have over the process or their recommendation.
If we're going to use a CPI as our guideline, as it's stated, not as a guideline, but as a de facto, this is what we're doing, and I'm okay with that, but I would like the leaseholders to be aware that, you know, if that CPI goes up ten percent next year, are we still going to, we're going to follow that? I mean, we can't pick and choose, and I'm fine with lowering the rates, I just want to make sure that the leaseholders out there are accepting that, because that CPI could, who knows, go wherever. And so, I think, I don't know if they're doing themselves as good a service as not, but if, you know, if that's a recommendation, I just want to make sure that the leaseholders themselves are accepting that, because we've burned way too many hours talking about airport leases, and it's getting nobody any satisfaction at this point. I'd like to see, you know, an agreement out there between, amongst the leaseholders, anyway. Sam, yes, you're the...
I've been advised that I have to abstain from a vote on this, but I think the Airport Commission was simply trying to do exactly what it says in their lease, exactly. And it's, you know, if the CPI is going to go up, that's exactly what's going to happen. I don't think anybody would argue with that. But when we did raise it, it was raised on a good faith effort to try to, you know, as part of the funding project for the runway, and it wasn't very long after that, within a couple of days or three or four days later, then this other fee came up and was added to that. So, that's always been a real sore spot. And so, you know, as far as that lease is concerned, I mean, that's exactly what the wording is, and I mean, that's all based on the CPI. So, that's the wording of the lease.
Is, are the leases annual right now, the CPI? Reviewed annually or every two?
No, every two, every other year.
Yeah, so, I kind of, I did this a bunch of different ways. I took the CPI and took it as though you had a bank account and compounded it annually, if you did it annual, and I realized we don't do that according to the lease. And I came up somewhat in that fourteen number that you were talking about. Then I just took it from two thousand, ten years ago, and I think we're, and just look at what the CPI today is. If you took something that was priced ten years ago, what it would cost you today, and I came out with eleven cents. And then, I believe that's where we're at now, is eleven cents, right to the penny. So, I don't think we should raise it, I don't think we should lower it. It's eleven cents, that's what it costs you if you back up and bought a, I don't know, if you bought a sack of groceries ten years ago, and now you equate it to today, that's the cost. And that's using, there's two CPIs, and that's using the one that encompasses not just certain clerical, but using everybody in the Twin Cities. That's the one I used.
I honestly don't think you'd get an argument on that.
I think it's fair.
So, who calculated out the fourteen point five? Is that, or was that?
I believe it was the chair at the, yeah, that was the recommendation, when they went through and, you know, they ran or...
I think if you get the fourteen five by, like I said, if you compound in, if you compound the CPI every year, I think you'd come up to that number. And then, there was only two years in the last ten that actually went down. Every other year, it's gone up. And for two thousand, to Mayor Winnick's point, currently for two thousand and eighteen, it's on the absolute, much more than what we're talking about. So, I think eleven cents is where it's at now, and I think that's a fair amount. I don't, I'm not in favor of increasing it, nor am I in favor of lowering it.
Any other?
If we have a CPI increase of ten percent, we've got a lot more problems than airport leases. I mean, look at the historical numbers. I mean, I appreciate your point, but that's a very extreme example, and would be a sign of a very poor economic environment for all of us. I think, I'm going to go back and support, I think the Airport Commission just did a fantastic job of tackling this, and you know the leases have been just a tough conversation out there. I thought Don Steeler did a great job of leading through the conversation. Their result was a slight decrease. However, if we, they were to say that, if they were to say that we should be adjusting based off of CPI, and this now currently results in a decrease, you could argue, well, maybe it was too high last time. They're not asking for any money back, they're just asking for, let's get back on track with what the contract says, and let's do it. Like, that's where I'm at. Let's support them, it's an opportunity to meet them where they are, and they did a really nice job of navigating around the, you know, the bogey of the two hundred and eighty dollars.
Did that navigating again?
They did, more navigating. It's good with airports.
All right.
Just to be clear, the, I don't believe the two hundred and eighty dollars, I think that's a separate issue, and will continue to be a separate issue, just, I don't think we're speaking to say that the Airport Commission agreed that that's going away if you, if you keep this rate.
No, I agree with that. They even made that statement that that was totally a separate issue.
But it does end up netting them a decrease overall.
I know, but it's, it's...
Separate issue.
It's a separate issue, and I'd like to keep it separate. And I think if you're going to go about a CPI, and the CPI works out to eleven cents, eleven cents it should be. If you're going to talk about the two hundred and eighty dollars, that's a totally different issue, and we need to resolve it. I do agree with the Airport Commission that it needs to be resolved.
All right, any further discussion? I'll look for a motion.
I'm going to abstain, so...
Point, what are we making a motion to do?
It's up to whoever makes a motion. Either we're going to make a motion to leave it at current rate, we can make a motion to raise it, or we could make a motion to adjust it down.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to keep it, I believe it's currently at eleven cents, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I would like to keep it at that, because that is in line with the CPI, as I calculated, and I've brought the formula along, and anyways, it is what it is.
So, oh, we got a motion, so...
Friendly amendment, would you be open to, let's take the math out of it, would you be open to an adjustment in line with the CPI, and direct staff to work with the Airport Commission to agree on what that number is?
Yes.
Whether that's eleven cents, whether that's, let's take the math out of it.
Yeah, I mean, it, we're talking pennies here, I mean, it's like, I would, I don't have a problem, I don't want to split hairs. I'm just trying to make it that if we're going to use the CPI, number one, which CPI are we using? Because there's two for Minnesota, Twin Cities.
Minnesota, I mean, I've, we do this for another contract that we have to adjust back to, and if you actually look at Midwest, or, I mean, Minneapolis, there's...
But there's two, and they don't vary by much, they vary by like a half a cent, whatever.
I think there's ones for like, does it include fuels, the gases, I mean, there's grocery ones, there's like...
No, no, I'm just talking about, there's one... And then there's one that has clerical workers, state workers, is a different one. But put them up, put them next to each other, it's apple on an apple, it's a half a cent difference.
I mean, from a staff's perspective, it'd be beneficial if I could go back and just negotiate with the Airport Commission and say, what's CPI? You know, so we have the same set, you know, because that way, like you said, and get that memorialized at some point, because the lease does just say CPI shall be considered reasonable, and then there's interpretation of, is it Midwest, is it Minneapolis, is it, you know, clerical one, like you said?
I certainly would think you'd take the Twin Cities, I mean.
Yeah, but even within that, there's subsets, you know, like I said, when I've gone through, looked-
Yeah, there's some that exempt fuel and some exempt food.
Right. And just making sure that when we're going-
I was just, I was just looking in total.
You know, moving forward, they're looking at the same data set, you know, so that way it's an easy changeover every year, we just go back to the same data set, and it's not, there's no gray area there, it's, you know.
All right. So Ed, do you wanna?
I will amend my motion to, what the heck was I? I'll amend my motion to, I guess, basically give it back to the city to determine what that CPI number is.
Adjust based on CPI to be agreed upon by Airport Commission Chair and staff?
Yes, that sounds more than fair. What she said.
So you're not putting an exact number on it, no, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying they should go back and decide which number we're using.
Okay, so it'll stay at eleven cents right now, is that what you're?
Yeah, well, and I guess my motion would be not to, in my thing, not to exceed eleven cents, because I see nothing to see that it should be more than eleven cents.
I'm just trying to clarify that, what you're thinking.
So from a procedural standpoint, I'll work with Airport Commission, we'll bring it back at their next meeting, then so the Commission has a chance to weigh in on the agreement of CPI, which version of CPI we're using, what that rate is, and then we'll go back to the eleven cents, which is the current rate for non-commercial, and the sixteen point five, which is the current rate for commercial, and we'll adjust it back to that currency, memorialize it there, so then moving forward, we'll go back in two years down the road and then readjust based on that agreed upon CPI.
I agree.
Do we want to have, oh, okay, we got a motion, I'll wait.
I'll second that motion.
Got a second? Okay, further discussion? Do we wanna have any discussion about the commercial rate versus the other rate? I guess, you know, all the discussions about the eleven cents, but we have a commercial rate as well, is that adjusted by the same CPI? Is that?
I think it's tied in the same lease clause, I'd have to verify that, but I believe it is.
And right now, you have the two commercial leases that you do have, there's really nothing going on in those hangars. It's not a commercial operation at all. I mean, the only reason they're being charged there really is because they have public access to the back of their hangars, so there's no, not no commercial.
But Sam, the new one that's being proposed-
That's a different story.
So you'd have to have that read?
Yeah.
I can do some clarification, I was under the impression that Airport Commission conversation included that, but-
It did.
It did, okay.
And their recommendation was the fourteen, the fifteen point four five?
Correct.
That was, that was included in Airport Commission, and that was-
I'm understanding his motion that it would, everything would stay the same, that's what I'm understanding.
His motion is that it would be adjusted to current CPI.
My amended motion is now to take it back to the city and reevaluate what that CPI rate is, so that there's an agreement that this is the CPI rate, and that the Airport Commission would then say, yes, we agree, this is it, we're on agreement, and then every two years going forward, we will use that number. Is that right?
So we're saying-
That's how I understand it.
Let's set the policy and then go back and figure out the math, and then we'll approve the math.
We just gotta get the right, or settle on what CPI is gonna be used. Are we under a time constraint to changes?
No, it's a recommendation that was brought to the airport, needed to consider during their March meeting, they tabled it to the April meeting, you know, we don't have a-
Yeah, I thought it was March or April that was the only time that lease rates could be adjusted. I just don't wanna run out of time.
I don't think we have a sunset in the current lease, but I can verify that, but I think it was just, that's when they, it can allow to be the odd year, or the, excuse me, the even years, they're allowed to be, can be considered, so. As long as I think it's good faith that it's negotiated, I think we're okay.
Sounds good. All right, any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstain?
One abstaining.
All right, motion carries. So HD, City Administrative Recruitment, Dan, do you wanna take this update on that?
Abrams, the council, during the last March, or the March twenty-six council meeting, staff was requested to reach out to City's Labor Attorney Mary Lee Abrams for a memo, kind of going through some of the potential issues with a city-led or council-led recruitment for the city administrative position. I did reach out to Mary Lee, had a conversation, she did review the tape or the video from that March twenty-six meeting, and then did go back through and summarize some of the issues of the potential pitfalls of doing a council-led internal recruitment for the city administrator position. I did include a copy of her memo, which basically summarizes a lot of, you know, what those issues are. First and foremost, she did confirm with what Bridget said last, during the last meeting, that if it is a council-led, even with a subcommittee, a lot of those negotiations, a lot of those meetings are public meetings, a lot of those negotiations are held in the open, so there are no, they would be, would not be able to have those negotiation sessions outside of a public meeting setting, which could potentially hamper the city's position when you're trying to negotiate with a potential applicant or even nail down the applicant pool. Also, just kinda pointed out some of the pitfalls, that since the city of Forest Lake does not currently have a dedicated HR department, nor does it have, you know, staff in place to undertake the selection process, there's the, kind of a gap in terms of who actually is gonna do some of the day-to-day administration of the actual recruitment process. Basically, the same recommendation is, I do again, included in here was the memo from the March twenty-six meeting, which kind of, again, outlined what the internal recruitment process would look like. Again, most of those steps that during that, or outlined in that memo, do fall on council or some, you know, some person directed by council to do that work, just given the fact that staff, you know, we currently don't have anybody in staff to basically manage this type of recruitment in-house at this point. But I did kinda give you the basic, you know, what are the requirements to do an internally-managed recruitment process? Again, the recommendation at this point, while I presented here an outline that's possible, I would recommend or advise against, I'd recommend for the hiring of an outside recruitment firm, just for the fact that these are pretty nuanced recruitments, these are a little bit more nuanced than, say, like a front office, because typically the people who are applying for these positions know city government pretty well. If there is anything that does trip up, if something is not done accurately, you have a higher probability of them suing the city for basically an unfair hiring practice, you know, so to speak. You also are probably gonna get a better recruitment pool, candidate pool, when you have a recruitment firm managing the process. That being said, it is, you know, council does have the discretion to manage it internally. I'm just trying to point out some of the potential issues with an internally-led recruitment. I do also have in the packet, if there is a direction given tonight to do the internal recruitment, I do have a position announcement, which again, was basically the one that was used in two thousand and eleven, I just changed the dates on it and updated the salary for current, what the current salary range is for it, and then also updated it to who would actually be collecting the applications on the city side. And then there's the job description, which was determined or set back in two thousand and eleven. Again, that was just simply cut and pasted in for two thousand and eighteen, so no substantial changes to any of the recruitment documents that were created back in two thousand and eleven, if, on an internally recruited, internal, internally-led recruitment process. Again, if you have any questions, kind of regarding some of the pitfalls, I'd be happy to speak to them, but Mary Lee's memo does a pretty good job of kind of outlining just some of the things to watch out for if council does decide to manage the process internally, internally, or have a council-led recruitment. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the process.
In two thousand and eleven, how many applicants did we have?
That I don't know, I'd have to go back to the recruiter that actually managed that process to get the full applicant pool. I can go back to maybe some of the documents that we have, I know there may have been, again, this is off the top of my head, maybe ten that were considered finalists in there, but then again, I don't have full access to the full documents, that's kinda going through our records, but that's a ballpark, so it could be plus or minus a few on there.
I know that, I was working, I happened to be working on one of the buildings at that time, and they were doing a tour or whatever, and there were, there was quite a bunch of them. I don't know what the number was, but I bet there was fifteen at least, so they were just walking through that building and kinda just themselves and that kinda thing, but so I think, you know, luckily, or hopefully, you'd get a pretty good-sized pool, and I think, and I've said it before, I think we need to, like, we can sure use our professional help here.
I think just from, you know, the advice I would get from, just from studying the standard we're going for, because the city administrator does help, you know, there's, council does provide direction with that recruitment documents in terms of what they're looking for in the next, you know, city administrator, are you looking for somebody with an economic development background, somebody with an HR background, I mean, kind of like you help to set the tone of what you're looking for in the next city administrator, and the consultant, they know which questions to ask to really tease that out, you know, to really get you a good set of recruiting documents, because that kind of becomes the foundation. You know, that being said, you could definitely use the two thousand and eleven documents there, they're just basically more, you know, bare bones, and, you know, you're probably gonna get a bigger and probably more robust candidate pool using the outside recruitment firm. They are the ones that are able to reach out directly to other administrators currently in the field that, you know, staff just doesn't have those connections made, you know, they're the ones that can go out to other cities and say, hey, I think you'd be a good fit for this, you know, position. It just would probably, you'd probably have a better vetted and probably a more robust candidate pool by going with an outside one. That being said, again, you probably would have a candidate pool doing it internally as well. There's just a few, from the procedural standpoint, the managed in-house recruitment does just put a lot more work on the shoulders of the council versus the, you know, you hire the recruitment firm, they're the ones bringing back kind of the polished document sets, you know, the ones that say, here's our top five candidates, you know, do you guys like these five candidates, or do you want me to go back and, you know, kinda go back for the next round? So that's kind of the main differences between the two, but just know if it isn't internally-managed recruitment process, a lot of those work in those highlighted areas do fall upon council just because staff was, at this point, would not be able to manage it internally, because we don't have capability or capacity at this point.
All right. Well, I just, I just hate to spend twenty-plus thousand dollars without giving it a try internally first, that's, that was my thought to begin with. You know, if we only get two or three applicants, if we don't have a pool to choose from, you can always go to Plan B. I just, you know, I believe that, you know, without trying it internally, we don't know what we're gonna find, I don't know if an outside recruiting agency is going to get a better qualified candidate. I don't think somebody coming from California or Texas is going to be as qualified as somebody coming from within fifty miles of where we're at here right now. And I believe all those administrators that might be looking to step up or looking for a position like this are sitting there waiting to apply as soon as the job is posted. So that's my thought on it, is I would think it would be more cost-effective for us to try this, but if the rest of the council feels like an outside recruiting agency is what we have to do.
Are you comfortable in doing that in a public meeting, though? That's the part that just, even if we had the gumption to do it ourselves as a council and to lead it and to take on that workload, to do all of that, the decision criteria of what we're looking for, all of that has to be done in public, that, and then we also need to manage keeping all of that applicant pool data private, and Mary Lee Abrams' memo just kinda points out some tough challenges we are going to have on managing that.
There's some challenges, but I strongly believe in transparency.
There's transparency, but then there's also, there's just a bad business practice. It's, in my opinion, bad business practice.
My biggest concern is the confidentiality of the applicants. Is there any way council could take on the role with keeping the applicants private?
At this point, so with the recruitment firm, they don't bring, they bring four candidate A, B, and C, and then you kind of, you know, can gauge off of that, until they become a finalist, until the finalist pool, so they're kinda doing the vetting process. At this point, if you had five candidates that applied, at the moment, the committee or, you know, hiring committee considered those applications, they're technically public data, because that can't be done, you don't have the exception for private meeting or, you know, closed session, you know, for considering of hiring of candidates.
You're only gonna get applicants that are open for career suicide of knowing publicly that they're looking for a job, and that's not the pool we're looking for.
That decision alone kinda makes it easy to me.
Yeah, I kinda agree that, I don't think this council, at least I'll take myself, I don't think I'm competent to be strong enough to say what's confidential, what isn't confidential, and to be in a public forum, talking to people, I'd hate to be the one to make a faux pas and say, put the city at risk, because I didn't know enough. So I have an issue with that.
The information you're reviewing in that process, even if you don't say the words, the information you're reviewing, which has names on it, becomes public, that-
Yeah, but the only thing I'd like to back up to, and kinda like, Al's still here, when we interviewed for your job, Al, that wasn't public information, I don't believe, and why was that okay, I guess?
That was managed internally, I managed that recruitment process, so that was gone through, scored, you know, we went through the whole kind of, you know, like, and that's typically how it would be done, where staff would take on the candidate pool, because you have somebody, you know, I've basically managed recruitment here for the past four years, you go through, collect the applications, score them, test them, interview them, and at the point the finalist, you know, the last portion person's coming forward.
And then my second thing is, when the chief recruits for officers, how is that handled? That's not through a recruitment agency?
Typically, again, I manage typically those processes at the last minute, when we get to the finalist positions, or we get to the final round of-
So, so what we're really saying is, we can hire any position from a city administrat- not, anything less than a city administrator?
The difference is the-
I mean, is that what we're saying?
The work, the work of council is public, the work of staff is not public.
All right.
Is that the difference, Bridget? Help us with the-
Well, I think the issue here is that, so the data is classified by the Data Practices Act, it's employment data, data on applicants for employment, and so the data classification doesn't change, whether the process is run by council or an outside consultant. The thing that changes is that the council, if it's going to have a subcommittee and it's going to meet, it's going to be a public meeting, which means someone could sit in on it. That requires the subcommittee or council to be diligent in its protection of the data. So when a consultant runs one of these city administrator search processes, they're going to use generic information, candidate A is a, you know, city administrator in a city of approximately this population, they're going to ensure that when the information is presented to council in a public setting, anything that would be identifiable, kind of the data that would identify who the candidates are, is not presented to the council. Again, until there's a finalist, once you become a finalist, then your data and certain information related to that, including your identity, is public data. So it's really just a matter of the capacity of who can manage the classified data, for lack of a better term, throughout the process. And if you were hiring for any other position, and that would be, damn, that's what he's done, you know, previously.
Well, the one thing I know for sure is, we just can't keep sitting on this, I mean, we need to move forward. This is, we need a city administrator. How much I know, how to get the best one is, I guess, our decision. I really struggle with the fact of keeping things confidential, and if we have to have public meetings, that doesn't seem like we could do that. So that's, that's my take, for what it's worth.
All right.
If that's what it takes, I'd make a motion that we hire an outside firm and continue this process, so we can get it going and get it done.
Which outside?
Well, there's one of three, I don't have them in front of me, there was one, I'd have to look at them again.
It's on page ninety-five of your packet? It's on page ninety-five.
Which one? Oh, it's in this packet, now you have it?
They're on page ninety-five.
I must've skipped over it.
Let's, do we wanna just do the motion to hire an outside consultant, then we can have a second motion?
That's what I was heading for, okay.
And just for clarification, too, these quotes are in there, were from the beginning of the year, so I'd have to reach back out to make sure they're still valid at that price point, you know, I believe that there probably wouldn't be a lot of substantial change to them, but, you know, I don't, I also make sure that they have capacity to do, because I don't know, you know, these are outdated.
I think that's a separate issue altogether, who you hire is gonna be a separate one or not you wanna have a consulting firm, so I don't know why.
Because I don't know, you know, these are outdated.
I think that's a separate issue altogether, uh, who you hire is gonna be a separate one, or not you wanna have a consulting firm. So, uh, I don't know why, but I skipped over it at the, when I was going through the packet there, but, um...
Before you make your motion, I got a question for Dan, and maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. Aaron, who moved on to Rochester and prior to Rochester, had another opportunity. Was that through a search firm? Do you know, or are you not able to?
I believe both of those were search firm-led. Rochester, I believe, had led a, a search firm. I don't know for Rochester for sure, but I believe the other, Morehead, had a search firm that was leading their process. But Rochester may have had their own internal HR department lead, I don't know that for sure. I have to go back to the documents that were published.
So, Sam made a motion, um...
I'll second the motion.
Second? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, uh, do you, Dan, do you want to visit with all three of these and bring that back as soon as possible? Uh, I'd also like a timeframe promo.
What's that?
Can you also check timeframe when they can start?
Yep. And I'll, if it's okay with council, I'd also like to reach out to other ones that, you know, potentially would be, because I just took a, you know, a kind of a reference. If I can find other ones as well, just to kinda give you the biggest, you know, applicant pool or the biggest pool possible.
Um, if there's any approval ratings of the search firms that are published, too, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
The other thing I have is, I know you're in a difficult position, and, you know, when we reach out, what happens? Say you throw your hat in the ring, now what happens?
They manage it at that point. So, I, theoretically, if I were, if you had, say, David Brown and Associates managing it, you know, and I put my hat in the ring for the applicant pool, then at that point...
But at that point, you couldn't no longer comment on the process?
Both of the, David Brown would have commented, they would manage the whole process to that point. So, I'd be, regardless if I'm in or out, they're managing the whole process to that point. So, I'm not having to come and do updates, they come themselves and provide the updates. So, you reach out to them directly to provide the updates, so...
Thank you.
All right, so you got everything you need, Dan?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, we will move on to Ryan. Make your next.
Mayor of City Council, in your packet is a request for the two thousand and eighteen street pavement maintenance project to approve plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid. Uh, previously, the city council authorized preparation of plans and specifications, so completed those and at that point to go out for bid. Uh, as a reminder, the project budget is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Seven hundred thousand of it comes from the franchise fees, twenty-five thousand from each sewer, water, and storm for the related utility work. One change in the memo is the bid opening is actually scheduled for May third. Uh, the project side located on the west side's not allowed to start until the July ninth, though, because of the staging for the Fourth of July parade. The east side is, uh, written in the specifications, they can start whenever they are. Uh, to kind of avoid some of the situations that occurred last year, there are different milestones within the contract and penalties accordingly. So, uh, once they open the payments, uh, basically the reclamation process, they have said amount days to get it restored. Otherwise, that's like penalty one, then there's a substantial completion date set milestone, which is pretty typical. Uh, but added up the, the fine per day there, and then our final completion date as well. So, with that, I know a lot of contractors already know about this project. Uh, as we open bids, we always review the bids at that time to see if we can, uh, lengthen the project as we have in the past. There are a lot of utilities in this area as we're moving southward in this portion of the city that has consumed a lot of your budget. So, that's probably something we wanna discuss in the next upcoming budget this season as we continue to move, uh, southward through the older neighborhoods and stuff like that. So, with tonight's requests, if there's not any questions, we look for the council to approve plans and specifications and authorize ad for bid.
Thank you, Ryan. Kind of build on this, uh, franchise fees, and Dan, you'll probably have to give me the numbers, but, uh, we are collecting quite a bit more than we're spending on our roads at this time. So, we have, is it about seven fifty or seven seventy-five?
Income for franchise fees?
Yeah.
I'd have to verify that, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. So, um, I know they were originally intended for the roads, and I would like to make sure that, that is being done on the roads. Whether it's, you know, mill and overlay or seal coating, whatever, somehow anyway, that, and those franchise fees are going where they need to go. And, yep.
Do we also not dedicate a portion of the, if you wanna call it an overage, windfall, towards roads also? And I would like to make sure that's all going towards roads.
That's your guys' direction, uh, you know, as we're kinda this far into this project, as we open bids, we can legally award up to twenty-five percent more.
So, just on the franchise fee comment, revenue in two thousand and seventeen for franchise fees was seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, and then budgeted for two thousand and eighteen is seven hundred and forty thousand for franchise fee revenues.
Okay. So, we do have a little more flexibility there and...
And it could be, I guess, put forth towards next year's project, too, you know, once that scope is better understood, too. So, I guess it necessarily doesn't have to just go just this year just because we got some money, you know? Be efficient with it and, you know, plan accordingly. So, if we get really good bids, maybe we can add some more and get to some of the further down the blocks than we would have preferred. Uh, but as, you know, we're out doing the inspection on these projects, we're already, instead of just sitting around on just this project, we're already looking at next year's projects and trying to do as many, uh, like, structure assessments as possible so we know, coming into budget season, we'll know then a better handle on how much utility work needs to be done in those areas, too.
So, a couple of questions for you. Um, I'm gonna assume that all the utilities under these roads are in good shape, or where are we at with water and sewer lines?
The water main, uh, no, we haven't had any, like, major things going on there. Obviously, it's original construction. Uh, the sanitary sewer was televised, uh, areas that's, in our project, don't really have any repairs there. There are some areas that's, uh, it's more manhole related with the sanitary sewer. And then actually, uh, removing one dead in line that's, doesn't have any service on it right now. And then, uh, water main basically is, uh, deals with hydrant and valves, and, uh, the storm sewers and, I wish to say, is horrible shape. So, a lot of, that's a large part of this project this year. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in storm sewer repairs.
Okay. I know Second Avenue had a big water main break over the winter time, uh, just off of Fourth. So, is that getting replaced, or is that not part of this?
We're not replacing water main.
None of it?
Not going block to block if we did do that. You know, that's the direction of scope of work we'd wanna define at budget season because that would be a full-blown recon then. Then we'd get into assessment projects.
I know, some of these, these are fairly old roads, and that's why I'm asking, is it, is it smarter to just pay them or...
We did stop where we, before we got into the worst of the worst, uh, because of budget reasons, too. That's where I said it's gonna be smart to talk about and plan accordingly because we are gonna trigger a lot of watershed rules next year if we go in and get those utilities that have, are known, you know, south of this limit, in between Second Avenue and Broadway. That's where we have major issues, thus, that's why the project was pulled back out of that area because that would be full-blown watershed approval, stormwater treatment. Because soon as you get below that subgrade, they classify that as a recon further rules and...
But don't they meet all the watershed rules currently? I mean, it's an existing road, wouldn't they meet all the...
As soon as we get into the subgrade, disturbing the underlying soils of the road section, you know, triggered their stormwater permitting rules.
When you're talking about installing rain gardens, new retention ponds and other...
Exactly.
Okay.
Potentially taking property.
If we are, if it was our goal to dedicate some of the two thousand and seventeen surplus, um, to these types of projects, um, when is the time when we need to, um, consider that in your scope? Um, are you saying?
August.
We still, so we still have time to be able...
We talked about that in August.
We, okay. And are we able to, I guess, I wanna make sure that we've got the, I guess, personally, I don't care if the, if the need, if the, if the need is water sewer versus roads. I'm looking at that as the same project, I don't want us to get pigeonholed. We talked about it in terms of roads, but I, my perspective is it's broader the project. And whether that's water sewer underneath the streets or it's the streets. Um, and I just wanna make sure we've got full, you know, decision-making ability. We're not boxing ourselves in now by not giving you direction, right? And I guess what I'm hearing is we still have those options open?
For this year's project?
Yes.
Well, we would have to adjust the project's schedule because if you wanna incorporate a bunch additional work into the project, then that work still has to be accounted for in plans and specs. So, that's why we stopped the limits where we did and also have the portion over on the east side of the city that is beyond patching. But then, now we're gonna get some lineal feet done, uh, with very minimal utility work out there.
Well, Ryan, you always, uh, you know, have them well thought out, so I just wanna make sure that, you know...
Well, really, it should come down, you know, at our budget discussion, do we have the appetite right now to move into an assessment projects? Because that's where you get everything fixed.
Well, and I don't think the question is, do we, you know, have the appetite, do we have the need? I mean, is there, there's obviously portions of the city that are encroaching that need that, you know, if we have water mains blown out every winter and we're spending, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars plus to repair a bunch of broken water main, um, I'd rather get it fixed ahead of time. I mean, you know, you can't, you can never tell, but, I mean, just by the age, obviously, your failure rate's going to increase on some of these. And I just wanna make sure that we're planning ahead to get it taken care of, right?
South of this project limits is proposed, you're running into a lot of four-inch just distribution lines that really should be replaced.
They're undersized.
But soon as we go from those block to block, that's where the watershed's gonna get us, because we've already had those conversations.
So, right now, where we're at, the water lines are adequate, you know, six inch minimum?
Yep.
Sewer lines have been televised?
Yep.
And, uh, were they televised in-house, or do we contract it out?
Did you contract that out, Dave?
Okay, so...
We have everything televised down to Broadway, right?
Utility departments made their recommendations already. Do you, I assume, of anything that's been in need of repair?
Correct.
Yeah, a minute before Ed's back, I think, uh, just to diverge off here a little bit. Forest Road and Centennial, those two are getting really bad. Where are we at, um, I thought Forest Road was a two thousand and eighteen project?
Uh, two thousand and eighteen, your state aid funds are going to a match of the Safe Routes to School grants. And then, so in nineteen, your, uh, state aid construction project is Centennial or First Avenue from County Route thirty-two up to Second Avenue?
Okay.
And then also, uh, Eleventh Avenue Southeast from Trunk Highway sixty-one to South Shore. And then Fifteenth Avenue Southeast from South Shore to Eleventh Street Southeast, and Eleventh Street Southeast from there down to BP Gas Station. That's your two thousand and nineteen state aid construction project.
All right. And any, Forest Road itself, is there any overlay, any, any plans for that one?
Uh, that's now been pushed back to two thousand and twenty-two, uh, to account for the roundabout at ninety-seven and twenty. And then also the local match here with, uh, Washington County thirty-two and thirty-three projects in two, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. All right, well, I'll look for a motion on approving that project.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand and eighteen street pavement maintenance project with the dates and timelines, um, as, as outlined in staff memo.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Council commission appointments? That's for you, Blaine. So, we have, um, as discussed, we were gonna have you on the fire board and on the Parks, Lakes, and Trails Commission. The other open one would be the Personnel Committee, I'm gonna take over that one myself. And we have a Planning Commission that's still open, and I'm just wondering if anybody here has an interest to do that one as well? Or it's an awful heavy load for a new member?
I'd be happy to do the Planning Commission, I have a fair, a lighter load compared to some, um, as far as actual city meetings and more liaison assignments. So, I'd be happy to take that unless somebody else has a burning desire to take on Planning Commission.
Does, uh, do you want to step off of one of the committees at all?
Um, so Cable Commission is in, is in great shape right now and is a nice one to cut teeth if Blaine wanted to take on a Cable Commission assignment. But if you feel like your plate is full, um, I'm happy to keep that, it's, the meeting load is not hard.
When do they meet?
It's in great shape, it's in great shape. Um, they meet, oh, every second Wednesday at four P.M.
I'd like to start off the two of them for now. And, uh, after I get my wheels rolling, I might be willing to take that from you.
Sounds good. So, then, did you want to take the Planning Commission?
Unless somebody else has, wants to take on another.
I'm ready to meet.
Happy to do it.
Well, and we can fill in if you can't make all of them or whatever, so... All right. Moving on then, do we need, uh, council approval on that?
Yes, Mayor, your honor, I look for a motion. It's a, a lot of these, for example, Planning Commission are appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council. So, uh, perhaps a motion that memorializes these commission appointments.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion then that we're gonna appoint, appoint Blaine Bacchus as, um, Parks, Lakes, and Trails liaison, uh, fire board liaison, and, um, we're gonna appoint Councilmember Mara Bean as Planning Commission liaison.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And if we can take a quick recess here?
Mayor, we could also just switch the order around and just do updates quick while Bridget finalizes it so we can just get the updates taken care of and then come back and do the, the motion. It's your discretion, but we can...
Do you want me just to hit G and H right now, then?
Yeah, we could just continue on and Bridget decides to review the, the resolution.
It sounds good.
We could just keep the meeting going so we're not, you know, in extra time.
Uh, so, I'll look for a, uh, motion on the ACE hardware invoices.
Some moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand?
Okay, one abstain, and one ex supply invoices.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstain. Takes us to staff updates. Dave, anything for us? All right, thank you. Chief Newman? Sorry, Donovan, we usually, I...
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
This is Dan C., for some reason, he's not here. I just wanna report, we're continuing with, uh, some large applications to the Planning Commission. We will be reviewing at the end of the month. And also, um, update on the comprehensive plan update. Um, we, we are, we'll plan to take that to, um, Planning Commission in May. Uh, with that, we'll be filing a formal, uh, request for a deadline extension in order to make sure we get it right the first time. And as far as finalizing details, um, but we'll, um, at the end of the month, um, do, have the public hearing for the comprehensive right-of-way ordinance, um, instead, which is also needed in order to, um, bring that online, bring that to council in May for their consideration.
What parts of the comp plan are we, uh, really behind in?
Well, right now, um, actually, having the future land use map finalized is the, is the next step. Right now, I did get a review from Bolton Menk, uh, there are a couple of changes I need to, uh, make, get that back to them probably tomorrow. But then, they need to do the, uh, more underground infrastructure, um, staging plans and, um, that, those sort of things that are the underground engineering that could be on the colored, you know, zones on the map. But we do have a draft Parks, Trails, Parks and Trails chapter. And then with the changes with the future land use plan, there will be some changes in the charts for housing and other, other, and other chapters. So, that's kind of ripple effect, once, but once the, um, the future land use plan is established, as we, you know, ha- ha- having, uh, another meeting to do that... having another meeting to do that, we, you know, that's a big step toward, you know, to then finalizing all the other chapter pieces.
Well, if there's anything council can do to help expedite it, let us know.
No, I think right now, we're just need to do that, kind of, the background, all the background work and to bring you a good product.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Donovan? Chief Newman?
Blaine, welcome to the fire board. Now that that vacancy has been filled, we'll schedule a meeting for May. So I want to provide a update on where we are for fire runs. We're at 121 as of today versus last year, we were at 91. So we've had a 33% increase year-to-date over last year, which was already a record year from previous years or our highest year. With our pre-planned program, we're at 197 completed pre-plans. We expected to be at 176 or 21 ahead of schedule. Now, we have had some missed days because of either snow or cold weather. But from where we projected, we'd be at this point where we're ahead, so that project's going fairly well. On April 1st, we hired four new firefighters, they started on 401. So that brings our current membership to 32 and we're excited to get them to schooling and start that training process. And then the last thing was on 3/26 at 8:39, we were called out for the Fire at Lakes Trading Company. Fire took approximately four hours to bring under control and fire crews remained on scene until 4:00 A.M. To extinguish hotspots and complete overhaul. I want to thank, first of all, the firefighters for all of our mutual aid companies that came in to assist. The Partner Cities, Wyoming Fire Department, Hugo Fire Department, Llano Lakes Fire Department, and White Bear Fire Department without their assistance. It would have been difficult to keep that fire from impacting the neighbor structures to the east and the mall directly across the street. I would also like to extend a special thanks to Exile Energy, North Ambulance, the Salvation Army, and Willow Brook Community Church for their assistance. North Ambulance stayed on scene throughout the duration of the fire. The Salvation Army came in and fed the firefighters. And Willow Brook Community Church opened up their facility and their restrooms in order for us to be able to operate comfortably. And then lastly, Forest Lake PD, you know, what can't be understated is when you have a, a big event like that, you get a lot of bystanders, you get a lot of traffic. They're instrumental in keeping that traffic back from the fire scene, which allows us to, you know, quickly establish our operations and reduces the potential for bystander injury. And Forest Lake PD has done a great job on some big instances that we've had and it's been very helpful. So that's all I have, if you have any questions for me?
Any cause yet?
You know, that's currently under investigation and, and at this time, it doesn't look suspicious. They're not thinking arson, but anytime you have that big of a dollar loss, you know, you have insurance investigators and the state. And so it's still currently under investigation and hopefully, in the next couple of months, that'll be released by the State Fire Marshal. They're leading the investigation.
The only thing I'd like to add is I have a fellow I work with is, he's a new, a new firefighter to Llano Lakes and he was called on that, called into that incident. And he was very, very impressed with how well that was led. So hats off to you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Put the whole department on, outstanding job, so.
Thank you.
So kudos on that and then just question on, at some point it'd be helpful for us to understand your increase in calls. Where are those coming from? Is it, is it medicals, is it, and what do you, what do we need to do to be, if this is new normal, if this is a spike? I know you probably don't know that now, but.
Well, actually, we did, we reviewed last year's call load by call type and it was actually spread out pretty evenly amongst all the different type of events that we had called for. And we did a review of the first two months because we were so far ahead of where we were last year. And it's the same instance, so there just isn't one thing that's driving it. For instance, in the early spring, late fall, you have grass fires or severe weather that are really a big swing type call depending on weather conditions and severe weather. And we haven't got to that point for that to be a big issue, so at this point, there's a lot of drivers of the increase.
All right. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I have a few items for you. Just want to let you know that the city received the Center for Public Safety Management's final case study on our police operations. And we will have this as a agenda item on next Monday's City Council Workshop on April 16th. Captain Weiss and I will be available at the workshop to answer any questions you may have regarding the case study.
And, and just to build up that, I'll be releasing that up first in the morning. Still, the PD will be sent out to all members of the council, so.
And secondly, the school resource officer agreement was approved last Thursday by the Forest Lake School Board. Prior to sending the agreement to the school board for approval, it was reviewed by our city attorney and the school board unanimously approved the agreement. This agreement will be placed on the April 23rd City Council meeting agenda for your consideration. And then lastly, I was informed this past week that Officer Pat Ferguson will be officially retiring from our police department after working in law enforcement for 34 years. Pat has worked for the Forest Lake Police Department since 1999 and prior to that worked for the Bayport Police Department and St. Francis Police Department. And Pat's last day of employment will be May 31st, 2018. So he's still going to be with us for a couple more months, but I think he's going to be, he'll have a lot of time to plan for his retirement party, I guess.
Some time to get a nice tan after that.
Yes.
Question with the school resource officer program. In lieu of recent events, is there any equipment or anything else that we should be looking at providing those officers or to the school?
As of right now, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I can definitely reach out to Sergeant Mark Richard, who's in charge, supervisor in charge of the school resource officers and, and speak with them as well if there's anything. But they're usually pretty good about notifying me if there's something that, you know, they need or require to do their jobs.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if there's ways that we can increase safety or, you know, if there's, if there's something lacking that we can help with it.
Sure, definitely.
Any other questions for the chief? Bailey?
Nothing for me.
All right, Dan?
I have an update on, Dave, the compost site open in, I mean, obviously weather dependent, but a couple of weeks, you know, earliest. Could get pushed back a little bit longer is what you're saying? We're gonna get the compost site up, open as early as possible. So as soon as conditions allow for it, we will get that up and operational. We'll announce that on C's website, Facebook, and then put it on the message board out front as soon as we have the date for the compost site to be open for this year. And the second thing I have is we closed the applicant pools for the intermediate accounting clerk and the fire technician. Reviewed the first, the applicants that we received, got a bunch of good qualified applicants for those two pools. Started testing and we'll be interviewing later this week, early next week. And we'll hopefully be bringing recommendations forward for filling those two positions at the next City Council meeting on the 23rd.
Question, Dan, going back to the compost site. Are we chipping on that? I thought we were not.
Uh, we're just doing it based on when that guy or the contractor comes and picks them up, correct? We don't actively check out there.
The chipping's not a part of it for us.
But no, we also don't have compost available for residents anymore either, correct?
We have, we're, we're just permitted as a transit station.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, no updates for you.
All right, Sam?
Do you want to take Ryan first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ryan?
Peter here, but last Wednesday, April 4th, we had the pre-construction meeting for Timber Ridge Apartments, 73, 73 unit building. We do plan on starting mid-April here, so they'll be able to come down Everton Avenue or County Road 33, which is a nine-ton road, and then start some work there, even, I guess, in the frost, but. So get it, right? Headwaters 11th submitted construction plans, so majority of that site or that development will include the extension of Headwaters Parkway to the west. Chestnut Creek Phase 2 has also submitted construction plans. So a lot of activity there. And then I believe April 25th, the planning commission will review or hear the applications or plans for Headwaters Place, which includes 30 detached townhomes, and the Headwaters Landing, which is a 45-unit rental housing community. And then the Chevrolet Cadillac site expansion, so they have a lot of square footage they're adding over there. Things are going well, so it's good for them. March 19th, we have two bid openings, one at 9:30 A.M., which is the Reclamation Double Chip Seal Project, and 10:00 A.M. the Safe Routes to School project. May 1st, I'll be attending the Washington County CIP planning. This is something new they started last year where it gives us staff the ability to reach with Washington County and basically suggest and recommend things they want to see within their CIP for the 2019-23. It's basically called Engagement Workshop, they have three locations, one in Oakdale, I think Woodbury, and then one's actually held in Forest Lake. I don't know if any other staff's attending, but I will be at one on May 1st. End dot project was supposed to start today, obviously with the snow, it probably just delayed things and they'll plan on starting tomorrow. Basically, they'll be working on, on traffic switch over on northbound there and then getting into work probably, I guess, May, depending on where we're at with conditions. And just a few bills in the legislation I want to bring up because there's a lot of new activity kind of going on. One is a wireless bill that would cap application fees for larger wireless equipment at $3,000, basically on water towers, buildings and stuff like that. And why I bring that up to you is of importance, yeah, $3,000 is a lot, but a lot of this stuff's done from other firms outside of the state. So they submit the bare bones and don't do all the things that you really need to do to protect your assets such as your water tower. You don't go through the proper structural stuff, so you play ping pong with the application, right? And by the time you get to a set of plans, that's what we want to see, that's what happens. So currently, there's no hearing for the bill yet or hasn't reached a hearing yet for that. Another one that's, you know, something to rely heavily on construction getting done is a bill requires release of retainings before final completion of construction projects. I think that would be very detrimental if that passed. It actually got stopped in the Senate, but it could be included in a House bill. So if you ever have any side conversation with your legislation, that's one we certainly don't want to support being approved because how many times have we had to hold retainings to get someone to do something? The point of why they've been holding it is a lot of the prime contractors have not been paying their subs. So their subs are the kind of little man out and not getting paid and makes things difficult for them. Another thing that's, is a bill goes to the floor in the House and Senate. A long time ago, it used to be 50,000, 10 years ago, it was changed to 100,000, but basically it's a bill that would increase the competitive bidding thresholds up to 175,000. So just some things that you should be aware of and how they affect our public projects and stuff like that. So if there's any questions.
Ryan, on the work on I-35, when they commence, that temporary concrete mixing structure that they're putting up right on the side of 97 and the bridge there, what hours of operation will that have?
I, I don't know of that, I guess. They haven't really released detailed, you know, start, stop times and all that, so.
Are there restrictions as far as how many hours they can operate?
That would probably be a Columbus thing because it's in the city Columbus. You know, we have ordinance on our construction times and stuff like that and we have waived that during timeframes, whether it was seasonal things or stuff like that. But I could certainly reach out to the city Columbus and find out if there are working restrictions on that.
That would be good, thank you. I see lift station projects come along good, are we back on schedule with that or?
I don't think they're off schedule, it's just we had obviously a very long cold winter and so they started, stopped through those early cold periods. Certainly made a lot of progress this week, plan on starting additional ones even tomorrow. Like we mentioned earlier, with potential of adding a couple of stations, we'll be bringing some costs back at a, hopefully in the next meeting or two for you guys to review and approve if, if they're in line with what we've estimated to add to the project, I guess, so.
All right, thank you. And Headwaters 11th, approximately, how many houses is that going to be?
That's 11 lots.
Just 11? Thank you, Ryan. And now, Sam?
Yeah, I attended the last school board meeting, which was packed, lots of people. The big concern there was cutting the budget again by 1.7 million dollars, which, and there's going to be another 300,000 coming up, I believe, in May. And the subject also is going to include talking about closing the Montessori school. So it's, it's a big deal there. It's a lot of money, then, since I've been liaison there, I think they've cut about $6 million out of their budget, so. It's getting tougher and tougher. And that's all I have.
The only thing I got is attended the Airport Commission meeting. We already kind of kicked that around and discussed the lease rates and a little bit of discussion on the tentative commercial building that, whether or not that fellow's going to go ahead with that project. Other than that, there wasn't much said there. That's all I've got. All right, thank you. Had the opportunity to meet with a couple of developers looking to build here in Forest Lake. One of them just wasn't, there just wasn't a location suitable, unfortunately, but still working with another one, that other 20,000 square foot building that, keep our fingers crossed and see if we can get that started as well. And several, several meetings concerning 180th and the overpass and exchange along there. So that has been keeping quite a bit of my time trying to push that ahead and hopefully we have, can gain some momentum. But next couple of weeks, I think we'll, we'll get a lot more input from other, other people on that. Are, is Washington County involved in that? Not at this point. Are they going to be? I mean, are we getting, are we getting any leadership from them? From the county? I don't think we've really had too many discussions other than they're waiting to see what Inoka County will do because the exits in Inoka County. But yeah, we'll be reaching out and hopefully seeing what they can do as well. And then attended some, you know, comp plan meetings as well to try and get that sped up, so. That, that kept me busy. Blaine, welcome, this is the time we give updates, so.
Well, I've been a council member since 7:00 officially, so. Actually experienced so far.
Mara?
Also attended the Airport Commission meeting, just, we already rehashed those conversations. I just thought it was a really well-run, great conversation. Also attended the school board meeting and then today had to talk, tell my coworker who was all excited to move his family to Forest Lake and move, have an opportunity to move onto the lake and send his kids to the Montessori school to then say, don't get so tied to that Montessori school because there's really tough conversations happening there. So that's a unfortunate development and really tough decisions having to be made. That's all I have.
All right, so before we get to, in turn, we have one more motion, resolution to adopt.
Mayor, members of the council, before you, I have, I think it's about a six-page document. It's a resolution memorial, memorializing the findings of fact and reasons for denial relating to the zoning ordinance text amendment. I would ask that you take this opportunity to read through it carefully and ensure that it accurately reflects the motion that was made and the reasons articulated, again, by those who voted against the zoning ordinance, adoption of the zoning ordinance text amendment. The findings essentially indicate that there was a motion and a second, there was a vote. It was a vote of two, four and three against, that that vote constitutes a denial of the application in zoning ordinance text amendment that the council members voting to deny the zoning ordinance text amendment after reviewing consideration of the factors found in City Code Section 153.037E articulated more specific findings of fact and reasons for denial and those reasons were made part of the record. I've attached three exhibits to the resolution that outline those reasons articulated as I. as I heard them on the record, if there are any additions or corrections, I'd ask that that be made, uh, before a vote is made on this, and again, this is not a vote on the, uh, issue itself or the ordinance amendment itself, it's simply an adoption of a resolution, uh, memorializing the findings as articulated by those who voted no on the original question.
Thank you, Bridget. No, I reviewed mine, I don't have any changes to that or corrections to be made. And does yours look okay?
It does.
All right. I'll look for a motion then to adopt this resolution. I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve Resolution number oh four dash oh nine dash two zero one eight dash zero one, uh, resolution memorializing the findings of fact and reasons for denial relating to the application, uh, must've retold the thing, of the Kraus Anderson Realty Company and Randall Delmore and Susan J. Moore trustees for a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend the language of the City Code, Section one fifty-three point three two three, to permit a residential facility licensed serving more than ten persons as a principal conditional use in the city's multiple-family residential MF zoning district. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on that?
So I'd like to just point out that the criteria for approving and denying are quite clear, and we only have one of the criteria that actually reflect that, section, section one fifty-three, zero three seven E, and, um, I fear that opens us up for exposure.
Any other discussion on it? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
And abstain? Nope. All right, resolution is passed. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Some moved. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.